We can get started. Let's call the Finance Committee to order at 7:00 PM. The committee is myself, it's Counselor Tavares.
I can be a sort of needed.
President D'Elissio can be the third for tonight. And the purpose of this meeting is to meet with department heads and talk about their individual budgets for the fiscal year '26. And so, without further ado, I'd like to call the Budget Chair forward and we'll start with Lynn and Human Resources. Welcome.
Pleasure.
Pleasure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. You're welcome and thank you for going first tonight. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Outstanding. And for those with the budget book, I believe, is on page 58.
And then if we're looking at the year-to-date, it's on page 8.
So, a lot of what I like to, so first of all, I like to try to keep this fairly casual and like, the goal isn't to try to ask gotcha questions. I do think it is important to have everybody, to give everybody a chance to come before us and just talk a little bit about their individual budgets. I do think it's valuable, but like to hear what's changed between this year and last year, understand what challenges you may be facing, if there were things you asked for that aren't here or things that, just sort of talk a little bit about what isn't sort of black and white on the paper with this and just give us a little bit of a play-by-play on the budget. And just kind of a little bit of a narrative.
Sure, sure. So, I think a lot of the stuff that we do, you know, obviously the health, dental, and the insurances is usually the big part of it. You know, we've instituted a lot of training recently, so I think a lot of the changes have been the safety and the staff development training. So, this year, we partnered with BCC, they've been an excellent partner. We did Excel training, we just finished up a customer-centric training, and we're doing upcoming in June as a performance management training. Along with our new class and comp plan, we have instituted SMART goals, so people setting some different goals, so along with that came some additional training. And I think that'll continue. We did have, put some more, you know, money in the budget again for that because I think it's important to continue with the development of our employees. And I think it's been valuable. Everyone who has gone to the trainings, I have gotten rave reviews, so I do want to continue those for next fiscal year. Safety as well, where we have done a lot and I think we've made great strides, but safety is always changing, so we want to continue on with that. We have changed the amount, what we do now is we have a, Wastewater will have their own because obviously they're an enterprise account and they have some different challenges, but in my office, we manage the citywide. So, how that works is I kind of oversee all of the departments and what trainings they need and set them up for the safety if anyone needs evaluations, whether it's personal protective equipment or any site evaluations that they need, how do we do this better? Are we doing it the right way? Do we have the right equipment? We have a safety expert that we partner with and they come out and we pay them to do that for that. So, it's on a, on an as-needed basis, so it depends on what we need and we pay as we go, so they bill us as we go for the training. So, we've done a lot, we've done OSHA 10, we did an OSHA office class. So, for all of the folks in the office, obviously it's not the same challenges that people are out in the field, but there are still hazards that we need to be aware of. And it was really good for people to kind of see what we should be aware of. So, we continue with those. A lot of it is geared towards, you know, our road crews, our road work, safety, work zone trainings, things of that. I'm trying to think of some of the other ones that we did this year. We did quite a few lockout-tagout, confined space, Haz Whopper, Haz Palm, excavation and trenching, aerial and scissor lift, so a lot of different things. We also have just started, just getting ready to roll it out, we did sign a contract, which some of the safety money went to this year, is Alice training, so intruder and active shooter type training. So, what we did is we purchased a platform to be able to roll it out electronically. So, the classroom portion, people will do it their own pace and it'll be online, just to kind of make it easier. It's hard to get everyone in the same room for the same amount of hours, so this was the classroom portion that we're gonna do. And then we're gonna partner with the PD to do some live drills after that. So, that's kind of, I think, the biggest part of my budget. Obviously, we deal with the workers' comp. Some of these trainings, the instituting of the safety, is helping with our workers' comp. We've had, you know, a good year, knock on wood, you know. It's unpredictable, obviously, I can't predict indemnity in medical, what'll happen based on the claims that come up, but I will say, it has been a good year for workers' comp, luckily, and I think the employees are embracing some of the safety measures and it shows in our numbers. The other stuff, the...
When you say it's been a good year for workers' comp, is that also why there's so much unused in the PDP, Blue Medicare, RX? Or what is that, what is that line item? Because there's a large chunk of unused money in that?
I don't know why there's a large, do you know why there's a large unused?
Part of it's due to timing, so, I mean, some of the plans move around, so if qualifying events happen, right, people can migrate between different plans. Any qualifying event, if someone has a child, someone gets married, right, they have an opportunity to change their medical plan. I think this year, we had a decent amount of migration from the PDP actually to the HMO.
No, the PDP is the prescription drug plan that goes along with Medex, so it's not workers' comp.
Oh, yeah.
So, just, yeah, so the PD, we have a prescription drug rider on our Medex plan, so that's what that is, but it's obviously based on enrollment numbers. So, it depends on how many people transition, you know, and if people pass, then obviously, so it's just, it's a number scheme, as with all health insurance, because you have new hires, qualifying events, you know, people leaving, people coming. So, it, that's, same with kind of workers' comp, it depends, same with unemployment. Those are fluctuating numbers that we, it's hard to predict, you know, you think you get enough, you put enough in there. Sometimes you have more, sometimes you have less, depending on the year that you have.
Is any of that due to timing too, just in terms of when those bills come due? Because this would be, so what Counselor Chair Cobus is looking at is basically the budget through the middle of May, I believe is when he called those numbers. And I know we do things more so on a quarterly basis, so there might be...
I have to check, yeah, and I have to check with Chris on the, I don't do the billing, but I have to check with someone in my office in terms of the timing on that.
Some of it could be due to timing as well.
Okay. President D'Elissio and then Counselor Fau.
All right, good evening. So, I do notice that there is one week of a premium holiday. Can we talk a little bit about exactly what that means?
Yes. So, when we set the health insurance rates, we do so every, you know, every fiscal year. So, there are a couple ways to do it, there's depending on the rate. So, this year, there was, we decided that we would take the rate that Blue Cross gives us and then the, whether we have any rebates or anything. So, the rate increase this year was 15% for the active plans. So, sometimes what we'll do is give them a subsidy to artificially lower the rate for the course of the year, and our consultants had recommended against doing that. So, as a result, you know, we had talked internally and there'll be a one-week premium holiday, so it'll be sometime in December. Everyone on the plan at that point will get a one-week break, so the people who get paid every other week, it'll still be a one week, so the city won't have to contribute and the employees won't have to contribute, but we will have that 15%. What we had found is over the course of the years, there have been subsidies given, so the rate was kind of artificially lowered and probably not where it should be. So, we're kind of unfortunately getting back to where we need to be, and this year was just a large year. So, that's what we plan on doing.
Thank you, Lynn. May I follow up?
Please.
Thank you. So, as we talk about insurance, on the third page of the mayor's message, there's a bullet about reevaluating employee health insurance, which I think it's timely because just my concern is, at the rate that insurance is going up year after year after year, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, let me rephrase, let me redirect, actually, what do you think the impact could be if these rates continue to grow and grow at the rate they are? And what are some of the options that, well, some things we have to worry about, because I don't want to paint anyone into a chronic, because we can't control this, but it is concerning.
Of course, and I, you know, I tell everyone when we talk at IAC meetings, that health insurance is broken, we didn't break it, but we have to deal with the outcome of it. So, as a result, we are looking at other measures. We are looking, so we just brought on Good Health Gateway, which is a diabetes rewards program. When we, when they did our rates, what we found is the population that is diabetic, they, they have more claims, they're in the hospital longer, things are prolonged. So, this is something, and they are very successful at it. I had it in other communities and a lot of communities have them, and they're very good, they have a program that manages it, and as a result, the employee can get some free testing, free supplies, but there's, they have partners on the other end that are helping coach them along the way to a better lifestyle, so hopefully drive down our claims. So, we have, that is one thing that we have brought on. It's only been just about, it started May 1st, so only about a month, but I will say in the first week, we had seven or eight signups, which is excellent for our first rollout of a program, so we're really trying to get those things out there. In addition, we always look at, and we are currently look at, what else do we need to change? Is it plan design? Obviously, that requires a negotiation, I don't have all the answers for that now, but I will tell you that over the course of this last year, this is my second year here, the first year was kind of a getting to know the IAC and how it works, but over the course of this last year, we have spent a lot of time and energy of educating our employees about their health plans and about what it means. What do these numbers mean? Because all they care about is how much is coming out of my check and what do I get? But what does that mean? What does it mean to have a deductible plan? What is flex spending? I think flex spending is one of our underutilized benefits that we have here, so we really are trying to educate people on what that looks like, because if you, if people understand flex spending, it's pre-tax money. So, you get a lot of value for it. So, we're really, we have spent this entire year, the consultants have been excellent, and we've been meeting with the IAC regularly to really educate them, and I'm hoping that within this next year, we can have some more meaningful conversations with them about what we can do, because we all want it into retirement, right? So, not just for right now, but for our future, how do we keep it healthy? And I think every community is facing the exact same problems.
It's how do you fix something you didn't break, right?
Right. But we have to make every effort that we can to continue, you know, I want to make sure, that's one of the reasons some of us get into municipal government, right? The health insurance benefit is excellent, how do we continue that? So, those are the conversations that we will be having come fall, we've already kind of started conversations with our consultant, but gonna continue.
Good, President.
All right, no, I appreciate that, it's just, it's something that's real, that we all face, right?
Absolutely.
So, I appreciate that. And then, there are costs for unemployment. Can we talk a little bit about that line item, especially as it relates to...
It's the Shine.
Yeah.
The what, I'm sorry?
So, no, sorry. Especially how it relates to expenses related to employees funded by grant. Last week, we talked about Shine and, you know, what some of the impact that, that could have, that we could see.
And this, so, this was funded at $80,000 last year, and now it looks like it's dropped down to 45. And so, so for instance, if we were to lose these voluntary, these, sorry, not, these people that are paid for through the Shine Grant, so for this unemployment insurance, what does that cover? And say all of a sudden, we lose the Shine Grant money and we have to lay off all these people that we're funding through the Shine Grant money, like, what does that do to the city? Do we have enough, like, what does that do? And so, if we cut this line item in half or from 80,000 to 45, are we in trouble? Or like, I don't know what $45,000 covers for the city as far as the number of employees.
I don't have any help.
So, I mean, I can speak to, when we had looked at the unemployment insurance line, we had sort of looked at historic actuals and we felt that was a place that we didn't need that 80,000, so if you look at the actual, the actuals versus remaining, this is sort of adjustment for that. The, the other piece, I mean, to speak to Shine specifically, since you asked the question, there's only one full-time employee of the Shine program, so my understanding of, you know, workers, I'm sorry, unemployment insurance is it's for full-time employees, so in terms of the liability there, I believe...
Part-time as well.
As well?
Yeah.
Okay, smaller, smaller.
Smaller amount, but yeah, part-time is eligible as well.
Okay.
So, it can be both. I am not as concerned about the Shine program, that's, that's small comparatively, so I'm not as concerned if that went away. I mean, you know, there are a lot of circumstances...
As far as liability to the city?
Yes, as far, yes, excuse me, yes, sorry.
It is a liability, but it's smaller in scale than a lot of our other departments that are, would be, the unemployment insurance would be paid through this line.
So, in your opinion, this reduction from 80,000 to 45, our exposure to risk is not significant there?
I believe our exposure is consistent with the last few years, right? So, just the sort of regular turnover of employees that could lead to unemployment insurance, I don't believe we're necessarily in a much higher risk position than...
With the potential risk with the, with Shine and...
Just because the scale of that program is relatively small compared to the size of the city and the amount of employees in the city, I don't think it's a significant of a risk to justify upfront an increase in this budget line item or to sort of change the course of, you know, trying to map it to our historical actuals.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Counselor Fau, I'm sorry to...
That's all right. I was just trying to clarify, I think, what your point was. I mean, these large numbers that we see in available budget for Medicare, for health insurance, those are not actually available. I mean, that's money which you expect to have expended by the end of June, is that right?
Correct, there may be some, you know...
Sort of deceptive.
Correct, there may be some surplus at the end of the year based on changes in enrollment, right? We budget our health insurance budget upfront based on the enrollment from open enrollment season. People migrate around the plans, people leave the city, people come on potentially, you know, kind of lower-cost plans, so those things do change, and, you know, the money does get moved around those accounts to adjust for that. In years past, we've had really significantly large turnbacks in the health insurance budget, and in the last three years, we've really adjusted that down. You know, we haven't carried as many surplus plans. You know, in years past, we've said, hey, we have 10 vacant positions, we expect some potential turnover, so we're gonna budget, you know, the highest cost plan for those positions and, you know, some additional positions. We've taken a different approach the last few years, and that's resulted in a much smaller turnback. And that approach has been relatively successful this year, so we're not expecting, you know, the $700,000, $800,000 turnbacks that you might have seen in the last few years, probably something, you know, closer to under, definitely under 5% of the overall health insurance budget, but probably something closer to 2% to 3%.
Thank you.
Anything else that you want to leave us with?
I don't think so, unless there's any other questions.
Are there any other questions? Oh, Counsel Lavoie, yes?
Thank you, Chair Cobus. Just kind of beating the health insurance drum, when was the last time we ever looked into another provider, if ever, that you could recall or anybody else could recall? Not saying that that's the case, but just in terms of maybe having a better leg to stand on when we're in negotiations, things like that. I guess I would worry if we're in the same boat we were with place management until this administration where it was just, we get one person that's bidding and we're just gonna take what we get. So, I don't know if we've ever looked into other options just for the sake of an argument or...
I can't answer that, I'm sorry. Not in the two years that I've been here, I don't know when was the last time they would have looked at different providers. Keep in mind that it's a pretty heavy lift to make some changes because things are in the contract, so, you know, we have to, through 32B, there's a couple ways that we can do it. So, even looking at making any changes, it's gonna, it's gonna be a very heavy lift and it's gonna take, you know, the agreement of the unions. So, I don't know when the last time they looked at it, I know they did make some co-pay changes, I want to say 10...
2014.
2014, I think, about. So, they have looked at some things, but we are taking a little bit closer look at what we can do.
Perfect, thank you.
Just to follow up to President D'Elissio's question, the, I mean, health insurance really is a budget breaker for a lot of municipalities. When you're experiencing, you know, double-digit increases year to year in what we call the two-and-a-half environment, it's something that's obviously, you know, not sustainable long-term. And I believe, you know, as employees of the city, we all want to continue to have access to these benefits and ensure that, you know, we can support our, our active and our retiree plans going forward. So, you know, when, when Lynn says, you know, we're really looking at this, that's not just lip service, it's, you know, we're meeting with our consultant to try to figure out what are our options, how can we work with the unions to come to a good agreement to ensure that we have that long-term? And the other piece here too is, you know, this is a 15% increase for active plans, there was just an 18% increase for retiree plans, you know, we've budgeted a seven-and-a-half mid-year increase for retiree plans, so that's just compounding, and that just keeps kind of rolling over and getting more difficult. And what's included here too is, you know, the budget number you see in front of you is reflective of a one-week premium holiday, which is about a, a little over $200,000 savings for the city, as well as significant savings for the employees. So, that's something from a budget perspective, you know, even next year, if somehow miraculously insurance rates were a 0% increase, we'd still have to pick up that, that one-week premium holiday in the next budget. So, obviously, it's, you know, it's a, it's a difficult situation, we're trying to, you know, balance the, the needs of the employees, but also balance the needs of the city.
If I may.
Please.
So, I, I really appreciate that, and, you know, the reason I ask the question is just that, because when you look at what the, really the biggest expenses are in the budget, it's contractual, it's salary, it's longevity, it's insurance, you know, all of it. And, you know, I think Counsel Lavoie's question was, was a good one, but it's, you're gonna have the same issues with any plan, any provider right now. So, I certainly appreciate that explanation, because you've seen it in the private sector too, you know, to a lesser extent. The concern I have, of course, is, not just here, but everywhere, is health costs keep going up, cost of living increases are gonna be absorbed by that. So, it's, it's gonna be the municipality that figures it out first is gonna be the one who gets the, gets the riches at the end. So, it's, I don't envy it, I don't envy you, but I appreciate your approach to it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the mayor.
Good evening. Good evening.
Can I just chime in before I comment about my own budget and the health insurance? We met recently with the consultants, because I appreciate Counsel Lavoie's turnover-every-stone approach, which is exactly what we're doing. And what I found interesting was, when we were exploring potential options on the table, and correct me if I'm wrong, the consultant said that the best way to reduce your insurance costs is to have a healthier employees. So, fundamentally, we need to go upstream in this country and not downstream, right? We need to actively engage in more preventative tactics than in terms of, we have to plan for the cost, but the long-term return of investment is to have a healthier workforce, to put in place programs to keep people healthier longer. Diabetes, I think, was one of the largest reasons for the increases in not only our local cost, but health insurance generally. So, fundamentally, we need a shift locally and more broadly nationally on how we approach healthcare. It's unfortunate it did not happen yet, but we need to really rethink the whole program. So, one of the things that's on the table is to incentivize employees towards a better health and encourage them to do all that stuff, because that's literally the biggest bang for your buck. So, but I appreciate your questions, yeah. It's challenging, it's long-term, but that's where you get the biggest return.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
All right, welcome. Your budget is very straightforward, and so feel free to also stray into other, other areas that you want to cover as well, so...
First of all, I'll answer any and all questions, Chair Cobus, that you or anybody else has. As always, I'm open and transparent, I'll talk about whatever you want. I don't want to take up too much time, because my budget is one of the smaller ones, but I'm very proud of the work, some of the highlights from this year. When I took office, I inherited four vacant or almost vacant city buildings and the cost involved with lighting and heating them. I'm really proud of the work that I've done with the, with Carol Brown and Purchasing to dispose and with your support to get somebody off of the city's dime and to make them more productive, so I'm particularly pleased about that. There's nothing worse than wasting assets, we're not in the business of wasting assets. I'm really kind of excited about a little project. A couple of years ago, we got a community compact grant from the state for digitization, 150K. And my friend across the hall there, the city planner, in case you haven't been in his office lately, has an abundance of documents and plans of all sorts, so a good chunk of that 150K is being used by the planning department to digitize his records to serve a couple of important purposes. One, office space. Two, also to make the documents more easily accessible and searchable to employees, people doing business with the, with the city and the public. The goal in the longer term is to accept only electronic versions of planning documents, COMTOM documents, zoning board documents, because that's where a lot of other municipalities are, that's where we should be. With the funds left over, because Gary didn't spend them all, we're gonna be working to digitize the records in the clerk's office as well. As you might expect, the clerk deals and documents and paperwork, we're gonna try to upload some of those to free up office space, again, moving towards, if you will, ultimately predominantly electronic filing system. That includes, of course, also paying for stuff. I'm really glad with the treasuries would work and Unipay, but we need to create more opportunities to people to pay online and not have to, you know, come to see how, pay cash, it's just time-consuming and not necessary. So, digitization is the word for FY '26. I'm really proud and I appreciate the council's support, and particularly Counsel Angelo, Chair of the Personnel Committee, on the class and compensation plan. The benefits of that will not be seen immediately, but they will be in the long-term in terms of not only the savings to the city, the performance-based salary increases, but also in the staff that we can attract and retain. So, again, doesn't look necessarily like much in the beginning, but that's gonna pay off a lot of dividends, and I'm grateful to Mason and Lynn's help, that was a big lift for all involved. Lynn spoke to some of the training. I'm a big fan of professional development and educational opportunities for our staff, and we've done some good work there and hope to continue to do so, collaboration, collaborating with Bristol Community College and some other organizations, so I'm super excited about that. In terms of FY '26, there's a lot coming down the pike, some good, some challenging. The city does not have an inventory control system. I don't know where stuff goes. So, we buy stuff, we, it's here, I'm sure it's here, but we don't have any kind of tracking, we don't inventory or scan, you ordinarily would have like a scan code and track this stuff, we don't. That's concerning to me, and while I assume that all people are doing their job and stuff isn't disappearing, I wouldn't be able to really know in the short term, so I want to implement inventory control. That's gonna be a cost involved, but I think the impacts of that will be well worth the expense. Relatedly, Permitise, a couple of our departments have Permitise now. Permitise, if you don't know, allows you to do a lot of permit filings and stuff online. We need to continue to push there, there is some initial cost, but the benefits on the staff time that you save and the resources that you save will be worth it. I know this is something that my friend Counsel Lavoie has been on, and I work with Counsel Reynolds on this facilities and maintenance. The fact that a city of this size does not and has not had a maintenance of facilities department or person is mind-boggling, and it's something I'm working on, but there are costs involved, right, with bringing on full-time employees. So, in the very near future, Mason and I, and I forget who else is at the meeting, we're gonna meet with SEDEXO. SEDEXO has, I think it's a $3 million contract with the schools, 42 full-time custodians come with that contract. Imagine what we could do with just a couple of full-time custodians and facilities guys, so, or women. We're gonna have that conversation to see if there's opportunity there to utilize SEDEXO services, and if we do utilize them, then we might be able to just supplement them. So, these are conversations that we're beginning to have, it's important. We spend a lot of money maintaining and repairing these buildings, and I think there's a more efficient way to do it. It's not gonna prevent us from having to outsort some of these jobs, but we can save some money. So, that's on the agenda. Later on tonight, you're gonna hear about the zoo. The zoo continues to have challenges, revenue challenges in today's world. Some are lingering impacts of COVID and that stuff, but they're bigger than that, the world is different. People's feelings about zoos and stuff are different, and we have to end the deferred maintenance over there, which you may be aware of, or you'll soon be hearing, is challenging. So, I'm soon to commence planning, thinking, collaborating, and being creative about how to... planning, thinking, collaborating, and being creative about how to address those ongoing issues. It's just gonna be a serious discussion. It's not gonna be an easy discussion, but it's a discussion we must have. The special assistant to the mayor, first of all, to say publicly, I did not attend the public hearing that night, because I had already reached out to Chair Kobis about withdrawing. So I would not disrespect this body and not show up on something so important. I pulled it back, because I want to rethink it. I think it's important, folks, some of the stuff I'm doing, and this isn't about me. This is about the person who is your mayor. It's not a good use of a mayor's time. In a city this size, it's remarkable that there is not a number two there, kind of like a chief of staff, something to that effect. I do intend to reintroduce it. I want to rethink it. Not sure why it's in the ordinances. I'm not sure why it's appointed. I don't want to make it political. I want to go the exact opposite. I want that person to establish some continuity between administrations. I don't want to have one of those offices where the mayor goes, he or she brings in the whole staff. That's not what I'm trying to do at all. So I want to rethink the whole approach. So I will be advocating for that position in the future. My friend here on the right does absolutely amazing work, and I'm so grateful and proud of Mason. He needs a number two. This guy also does a lot of stuff where his time could be better spent doing other things. So we're gonna be pursuing the possibility of an assistant director of budget administration, and we'll figure that moving forward. But yeah, that's extremely important. And as you guys know, Mason's in the military, and if something were to happen, we would be, we'd have a lot of challenges. I can't do his job. The auditor probably could do a very good job, but Mason brings a certain skill set. So that's on the radar. And again, Gary across the hall, we need a number two in there. Gary's been with the city 37 years. The knowledge that he has in his brain will not soon, if ever, be replaced, but we need to be ready, you know, for his retirement and whatever else. So those are, and as you all, you guys who've been on the council for a little bit, no, that he's been asking. I think we need to really seriously consider that, because one thing that we often think about is the cost of these things, the financial cost. But the harder argument to make is the opportunity costs involved with not having them. Mason and I often have this conversation. How can we best explain to you and the public what we have not been able to do, or think about, or plan for, because we don't have the staff, because we're spending all day, and this is not a line, so please don't perceive it that way. But when we're spending all days keeping up, we're not, it's hard to move forward. So opportunity costs are something I really think that we, all of us as elected officials, should think about, you know what I mean? And that's also one of the reasons we're gonna advocate on at least those three positions. Related to that is succession planning. Yeah, we haven't done a great job of that. Some departments are. I know the treasurer has done a great job. I believe Treasurer Gignac has already started a binder. Laura's ahead of us. So that we're someone to walk into the treasurer's office tomorrow, he or she would at least have some idea of where the keys are and where the codes are and what needs to be done on what days. So I'm grateful to the treasurer for that, but we need to do that, a better job of that as a whole. And I'll conclude my opening remarks by saying, contrary to what people may think, I am fiscally conservative. I'm, I'm, I live below my means personally and professionally, and I appreciate the approach that this administration has taken towards saving money. And you'll see, we're gonna be sending down a request soon to add more funds to the stabilization count, stabilization fund to get it up. I believe it's another $2 million we're planning at?
Yes.
Around $2 million. That'll get us about to 6%. We're still working on our financial policies, which is a conversation I started on the council. We're getting there. We're going to try to set a goal, a target, if you will, for stabilization funds. The challenge with having that money there is, of course, the obvious. In the face of all the needs that you see in the city, if you see $6, $7, $8, $9 million sitting in the bank, right, people are gonna ask, well, why can't we spend that? I get it. But in today's world, with all the unpredictable things going on, particularly at the moment, we must have a rainy day fund that is up to the size that the city needs, because stuff can go south very, very quickly. The general thinking in terms of stabilization is three months of your operating budget around their parts. So I know some of you, you're all well aware of the many things that the city needs, but I implore you to, when you get that request, to just understand that. This is a big city. We need a lot of money. If something goes down, it's gonna go down quick. So having those funds there is extremely important. And I'm also talking to the taxpayers on the residents. It's not just a slush fund. Those are important monies, because when you need them, you're gonna be glad that they're there. We are working towards wrapping up our financial policies. We may utilize DLS, the Department of Legislative, is it Legislative?
Division of Local Services.
Division of Local Services, yes. They worked with us last year on the financial forecast. They're a great resource, so we may be bringing them down to help us out. So that's pretty much it, but I'll answer any questions you may have relating to the budget or whatever.
President DiLazio.
Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
I actually don't have questions. I actually have comments. It's almost like you took my questions. You knew I was gonna ask them, and you answered them. So kudos. So this is, I think you and I tend to be pretty aligned on a lot of the fiscal processes here. So I just want to support the Assistant Budget Administration Planner, Budget Administration Assistant. I think it's vital to have that.
Yeah.
Not just because if, you know, Mason is deployed longer, or another opportunity comes, or, you know, God forbid, he takes vacation, right? I just think that when you're building a bench, it's, it's too important, because what municipalities tend to do, and you, you felt it, I felt it, you know, several weeks I was upstairs, is you have to do more with less.
Yeah.
And when you do that, you're putting yourself in a vulnerable situation. And I think of the planner especially, and the help that he needs. We talked about growing the city. We talked, and especially with Gary, there's so much that he can't control, you know? There's so much that comes down from the state or the federal that it puts him behind the eight ball if he doesn't. I mean, we're here every Tuesday night, and Gary's leaving nine, 10 o'clock at night. Thank you for the increases in stabilization. I think that that's something that we have to do. And you're right, that is literally that rainy day. We're in an aging city. We have aging infrastructure. We have these problems. It would be foolhardy not to plan for those. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. I do hope you might change your thinking on the assistant to the mayor, however.
I do want to thank you for what I mentioned.
Come on, man.
But let me talk about that, then, for a second. Like, I think, I liked the fact that you said you wanted to rethink it, right? I think Chief of Staff, that type of thing might make more sense.
Yep.
Right now, you know, I, there's just so many things. How do you choose which one's the priority? It's a difficult, it's a difficult situation to be in. I don't envy that position.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, the other thing while we're at it, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the amazing job that Corey does here as well.
Yep.
You know? And, and if there is ever a facilities opportunity that should apply, this guy does it all.
He's a very hard worker.
For those who don't know, you know, Corey keeps this place looking great. He's the one probably who set up the tables, set up the chairs, you know, gets everything ready. So, but other than that, we can, let's talk about it.
Well, and to be, just to be clear, President DiLazio, if you were to ask me to prioritize those three positions I mentioned, an assistant to Mason is number one, assistant to Gary is number two, and assistant to mayor is number three.
Yeah.
That's how much I value the work that those two do. I do think the mayor needs it, but I would prioritize in that order.
And it's hard to find the right person. You know, I mean, I'm sure you remember what we went through last year looking for the assistant for Deb. You know, it takes, it takes time. And you've got to build the bench, and you have to invest in what we have here. So the staff development, I think, is, is a huge win, because there has to be a contingency plan in place. So.
And municipal finance folks are getting harder and harder to find. They're going to be some of the hardest employees to find. So, but thank you.
Sounds good for you.
Yes. Be nice to Mason. We gotta keep him.
I just, I have one quick comment, because I know we've done one.
Counselor.
Thank you. The maintenance, the new business for Council Reynolds and Council Lavoie, I really feel like that's, that could be a huge help and a benefit to the city. It could save a lot if we had this in-house. So I'm, I'm excited to hear what those talks are like with that, with the schools.
SEDEXO.
Yes. I'm excited to hear about what that could, that could do. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Counsel Lavoie.
I'll hop on the comment train as well, I suppose. Thank you for coming down, as always. Yeah, I just, I really want to commend the additional funds going into the stabilization fund. I think, as another conservative mind, I think it's very important. And I, I think your points to why are also very important. You never know. God forbid any kind of catastrophe happens to a municipal building. I mean, we're on the hook immediately. So I think proper planning is, it's about time we're doing it around here, and I am happy to see it. So I just wanted to commend you on that.
Thank you, Professor.
Anything else? Mayor, thank you so much for coming down.
My pleasure.
And I applaud you on a balanced budget and one that I know wasn't easy to put together. It is, I, I know.
A lot of it's my friends.
There were a lot of tough decisions.
Yeah, and we made it this year. We, we made it. Next year, hopefully, we'll make it again. But I feel like every year, we're getting closer to that edge.
And I know there were strategic decisions. I know in talking to Mason, the budget was balanced without using free cash in order to reserve some of that debt service capacity.
Yes, yes.
And like, there's a lot of thoughtful decisions that, that like, from a strategic perspective, it's a, it's a great budget. And so I applaud the administration, the team for.
Mason's approach to the, the budget, there's depth to it, Chair Kobis, right? It's not just what you see on the surface. It's.
Absolutely.
It's the thinking that he puts into it about down the road. Because the budget, this budget is FY26, but it's part of a longer-term puzzle moving forward, right? So the budget is about now in the future. It's like you're steering a boat, right? The way you tack now dictates where you're gonna wind up in a few hours. So that's our approach to it. So I'm grateful to Mason and Deb and all the finance, Treasurer Gignac, the assessor, all the folks who deal with the money and finance. The city is, regardless of who's in the mayor's office, we're very lucky to have these folks. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
And you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, guys.
I mean, a lot of it comes from the budget message that we sent out.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well played. Outstanding.
All right. Sorry. Next up, we have the treasurer, Laura. Welcome.
Thank you.
And what page are we on?
Fifty-one. So we have Treasurer on 51, and then the debt service section is on 141.
Okay, Laura.
Thank you, Chair. So you?
Whenever you're ready.
I'm, I'm ready. Let me see. So my budget's pretty cut and dry. There's not many changes to my budget. Obviously, Medicare lives in my budget, Medicare tax or med tax. There is an increase on that every year, and that's really based on employees, how many employees that we have. So this year, I did have an addition of $25,000 that came down, and that's based on, you know, new hires to make sure that we can hit to the end of the year. When I did my budget this year, I added 2% to the budget, to the number of last year. And that seems to be the methodology that we've been using, and it seems to be working. But you can never predict that line item, and we have to pay it. So that's the one thing that I can say that changed in my budget. Other than that, I asked for a reduction in my banking services budget. And I did that because I've realized some savings from some of the banks. They give me a lot of free stuff. We like free, free as for me. So I reduced that. We have some increases in other areas, but I did ask for a reduction in that to try to give back what I could if I didn't need to use it. Otherwise, all of my other line items are pretty much level funded. I haven't changed anything. A few years back, we did increase the Sedell and Sedell, which is our tax title attorney. We realized that it was consistently, year over year, right around the number that is here now, which is $75,000. They do an amazing job for the city. We've cleaned up over the past nine years that I've been here. We're down to like 120 tax titles. There was 350 at one point. We've been able to have people pay. We've had to use the attorney to, sometimes we'll send, you know, consistent letters to these residents that are past due, and they won't listen to us. So we need to send them along to the attorney and have some different conversations. But as of right now, we've, with them, we've been able to collect $201,000 of past due taxes. That would probably not be able to be collected, and that's going right back to the city. So very important, you know, that we keep up with that. I keep the same amount of files every year, usually, you know, somewhere between 33 to 35. We do have some difficult properties that the attorney has, some bankruptcy clients that are costing the city a little bit more that I took on because they were a top-10 taxpayer. So they live in my budget, and I put it there purposely, so I can monitor it, so I can make sure that we can certainly collect those funds at some point.
Do we have questions? Do we want to talk about debt service?
Sure. I'd love to talk about debt service. I distributed to Virginia to pass out to all of you the debt Bible. So the most recent debt Bible, she should have given to you today. This is the most up-to-date debt Bible that we currently have, and it is sectioned off by general government, water, wastewater, the school department. So you'll see that it is sectioned off. And if you go to the end of each section, it'll tell you what debt service we have due for fiscal year 2026. And then it will give you the overall debt for everything that's due all the way through all the coupons and all the borrowings that we have. So I pass that out to everyone, so you can take a look at it. If you look further into the debt Bible towards the end, you'll see that I've broken down all of our bands, any kind of short-term borrowing that we have. Currently, we have a short-term borrowing on the high school. This year, we do have pay down on that, that band, because it's been out for so long. We're required to make a principal payment, not just an interest payment. So we have, Mason has put that into the budget for that pay down. We are still probably a few years out on the final audit. Is that accurate to say?
Yes. I think we're looking at project closeout early fall, probably then beginning and getting to the final audit stages, starting in probably around October. Could be, the thing that's delaying a little bit right now is the solar array. So we're trying to work through that over the next couple of months, and then that will move us to final closeout. And then the audit process could be two to three years. I mean, it's a, it can be a long process, and the MSBA is pretty backed up. So that could be a pretty long process, and that's probably the point where we anticipate that the final, the final rebate to the city would actually cover the whole cost of the ban, I think, at this point. So we may not have to go long for that amount. But that kind of remains to be seen based on how much their final reimbursement amount is and what they want to participate in terms of change orders and those other components.
I've also taken the opportunity to break down the debt exclusion into a separate section, so you can see how much debt overall the city has. Also, separating it off with the debt exclusion. So I've tried to make this, this debt Bible's lived long before I have. Hopefully, everybody understands it. If there's any questions about it, I'm always open to questions, so you can feel free to come and talk to me anytime. I'd be happy to explain it, because it is quite a cumbersome document. It's quite large. But I've kept it the same format, just so that it's consistent over year, over year. And the councilors have been here a long time. I'm used to seeing that at this point in time. What you do not see on here is any authorized and unissued debt. We do have three authorized and unissued pieces of debt right now. We have the West Street Pilot, which is PFAS. That is a $500,000 loan authorization that we have not accessed, we have not borrowed yet. Not sure the timeframe on that, but we will borrow on that when it, you know, starts, we start to see a need, when the rate environment is good to do so. We don't want to pay the juice on a long-term borrowing if we don't need to do so. So timing is everything in this world.
And on that one, there's, there's also potential we might not borrow for that, just with potentially use of PFAS mitigation funds. So depending on the, depending on the amount of funds that come in, and whether or not, you know, if there's an opportunity to use those funds where we don't have to borrow, we would prefer to do that. So.
Of course.
The second unauthorized and issued, authorized unissued borrowing is our fire department rider truck. There is about a three-year lead time for that. So we have the authorization. It's been ordered. I believe all of that is underway. It's 2.5 million. So that's something that you're not gonna see living in the debt Bible currently, and it's not in, in the total picture. And obviously, the last one we talked about recently was the PFAS, when that authorization went up to 50 million. We're actually lucky in this aspect of things, because we were unsure of supply chain, but the bid came in at about $32,973.
You said 32?
Million, I'm sorry. $32,973,000. Yes, that would be great.
That'd be great.
That would be sick. But, you know, our original authorization was $35,181,000. We realized that that, that could have been higher. So we did our due diligence to make sure that we didn't lose the SRF funding, because we needed to have an authorization by June 30th. So we said up to 50 million. So.
Right, I remember.
We are not gonna realize even the first borrowing, the first. So, we are not going to realize even the first borrowing, the first authorization, it will be much less than that. So, that's really good news for the city. What's also really good news is the rates that we'll get from SRF, and I kind of went over that. It could be, you know, two percent, or it could be zero percent, depending on when they look at the whole picture. You know, so it's, it's really a great way to borrow this money, and it will save the city millions and millions of dollars.
Yes, because it will save the rate payer dollars on the rate, for sure. The other piece too. That thirty-two million is just the construction component, so there's also engineering, construction oversight, the owner's project manager. So, we, at this point, we anticipate pretty comfortably we'll be under forty million for that project. So still probably over that thirty-five, depending on how things go over the next few years. But, so we, it was still likely necessary to increase that authorization, but I don't think we're going to come anywhere close to that fifty million.
Very good news. As far as rates, just so everybody's aware, I think it's predicted that the Fed is anticipating two rate cuts this year. So that's going to be very helpful to the rate environment in some ways and not in others. So, short-term rates will stabilize and move slightly downward. But we're seeing the long-term yields on the long end of the curve, like fifteen to thirty-year maturities increasing. So I think timing for everything in borrowing is, is very important. And obviously, our rating is very important, so we want to maintain.
And that's where I was going to go. So, two things. So, insurance rates and our bond rating. Any changes to our, is our bond rating changing? I know there's been sort of changing in, changes in how that's calculated.
Correct. So currently, our bond rating is a double-A stable, and it has been for quite, quite some time. However, some of the rating companies, Standard and Poor's, has changed the methodology of what they're looking at. So they've changed the weights in, let's say, the buckets that they're in. This is going to affect everybody. It's not just going to affect the City of Attar. It will affect every city-town and how they're changing that methodology. And they're just trying to get things more in line to make more of a true picture, I guess. So, they look, they've all put them all at a twenty percent equal rating, and I actually have the brochure on everything, if you guys need it, on what's changing. But it looks at our economy, it looks at our financial performance, our reserves and liquidity, our management and our debt liabilities. So, there is the potential that we could be downgraded, which would not be a great thing at all. But everybody's in the same boat. So I think there may be a shift, but as, at this time, we are not realizing that.
If I may, so the biggest, so we, we were rated in October, I believe it was October ninth, twenty twenty-four. And you'll, you'll see, when I send out the memo about stabilization and sort of why, the reason why we're recommending contributions we are, it's because there's sort of four main risk factors that S and P identified, which could result in the city being downgraded. One would be if there was sort of a change in a, our structured operations, meaning if we had, you know, a, if we have a budget that's not balanced, right? If we have a year where expenses outpace revenues, that would sort of be a change in our structured operational budget. So that was part of why, the, one of the reasons why we took such a strong effort to make sure we weren't using free cash in this budget. That's one of the efforts we're making to mitigate that. The biggest one is the outstanding liabilities. So obviously, we have a significant OPEB liability, significant pension liability. That's the case across all municipalities and most government organizations. And I think that's the biggest thing that drove them to change their methodology for government agencies. And then, the, the main risk factor, or the, another risk factor would be financial management. So, you know, if we take steps to put in a financial forecast, financial policies, and formally publicize those, that, that can prevent sort of a downgrade in that area. They look at our management team as strong, but they want to see a lot more stuff sort of formalized on paper as guiding principles. And then, you know, the other big one, which I think is the biggest change, is the financial reserves. So, our financial advisor basically informed us, the reserve amounts that they're looking for, for double-A stable, which we are, is equivalent to what it used to be for triple-A rated. So, essentially overnight, in September, when they switched their methodology, they basically kind of overhauled what their expectations are for a double-A stable community, and now they kind of expect us to meet that, that triple-A rating. And if we don't maintain and continue to grow those reserves and, and sort of stay in line with our peers within the double-A stable community, that's, would be the biggest and most obvious way we would get down, downgraded. The impacts of that are huge, right? I mean, if, you know, even if you go from double-A stable to A-plus, which even that would be, like, it might, we could be looking at like a two-rating downgrade. Even if it's half a percent on the long-term borrowing, you know, a hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar wastewater facility, thirty-year borrowing at four percent versus five percent, or for four percent versus four-and-a-half percent, it's an additional sixteen million dollars in interest, right? So, a hundred-and-ten million dollars in interest for four percent, a hundred-and-twenty-six for, for four-and-a-half percent. So it's a significant cost, right? And that hits not just the general fund, but our, our enterprise funds as well. So they look at our debt picture as a whole. They don't isolate to, you know, what are you funding with rate? What are you funding with taxes? It's, it's sort of the cities, that's one of the places where the cities lump together. So it doesn't just, you know, impact our ability to fund vehicles and small capital projects within the city. It also impacts our water and wastewater, those big facilities we have, have coming down the line.
Recently, they sent out what they call a re-offering yields of cities and towns that are borrowing, similar to us. And double-A community borrowed sixty-one million, and their TIC, which is your true interest cost, came in at four-point-five-one-eight-nine. So currently, our rates, in this current market, the rates that we're seeing are thirty-year papers at like four-point-two-five to four-and-a-half. And one-year short-term bands are running around three-point-nine to four-point-two-five, so what that will be later on. If I were to look at this, and let's just say, in the scenario that, that Mason had given, I don't think I have one that's like an A-plus. So, but the highest rate on here I do see is the double-A currently. So, just kind of giving you some information.
President Felicia.
So, thank you for asking about the rating. I had the same question. I, I think that's always kind of been something, Laura, you and I've had conversations about this in the past. And look, at the end of the day, we all know that, that you've done everything you can. Your office is fantastic. You've done what you can. But when I say you, I mean Mason and everyone, right? I guess my question is, and it might almost sound remedial in a sense, but what are some of the things we can be doing or looking out for, one as a council? And then, a little bit more about what the administration is doing to kind of offset that, which I think Mason kind of addressed. But as a council, what are some of the things we can be looking for? What are some of the things we can be doing?
Yeah, I think the biggest, I think the most obvious right in front of us is, you know, supporting continued contributions to reserves and kind of, you know, staying the course and, and growing those and ensuring that, as a percentage of our budget, those reserves are basically higher each year. Because that, they look at it as a percentage of our expenses. So from their perspective, you know, if your stabilization was four percent last year, or, you know, say it's, for, for example, our stabilization was about nine-point-two million last year, which is about five percent of our FY25 budget. Or five, just under five percent of the FY26 proposed budget. If we didn't contribute to it, it would look like our reserves are lower this year than last year, just because our budget's growing, and they look at it as, you know, on a proportional basis. So that's the biggest thing. Also, you know, supporting, you know, strong financial management policies, ensuring we have, you know, formalized policies, working with the administration to do that. That's something that's ongoing. We've got some meetings coming up to, to work through some of those, as well as, you know, trying to get a published five-year forecast. So that's been something ongoing with Division of Local Services and the Financial Resources Management Bureau. We worked with them to develop an initial forecast and trying to update it and hopefully have fiscal twenty-six adopted budget as year one of a five-year forecast. And that would, that would give us, you know, basically say, hey, look, we're not just looking at a year-to-year basis. We're planning for the long term, and that's something that they really like to see. Then, also, any, any policies or things we can do as a city to mitigate our long-term liabilities? So those, those OPEB pieces, the retirement pension, you know, ensuring that we're meeting those, meeting those contribution schedules and working towards paying down those liabilities. That's, that's one of the largest items.
President.
So, thank you for that. I think, I know I've talked to the auditor several times over the years about policies and having SOPs, and it's just, it's really important because it's helping the plan. The other question I have, which is unrelated to the bond rating, is where we have debt falling off? How much would you say we have falling off? And then, how is that being disbursed amongst this budget?
Yeah, absolutely. So, from fiscal twenty-five to fiscal twenty-six, in the general government side for non-excluded debt, there was about five-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand falling off. So one of the ways we sort of carved out, ensured we still have capacity within the general government budget to fund that debt going forward, is we continued the five-hundred thousand in the reserve for capital within the citywide budget. The difference this year, and for the first time, we funded it on the budget without using free cash to balance that expense. So we truly are using recurring revenues, basically taking that, that expense that fell off on the debt side and ensuring those revenues don't get shifted towards operational costs and, and keeping them available for capital. So that's, that was sort of a, a big goal this year, because it's very easy, when debt falls off, for your operational expenses to eat that up. You know, when you have a lot of needs across the city for additional staff, you have rising health insurance rates, it's, it's very easy to let that go and to sort of deal with the problem in the moment. And then, you know, a couple of years from now, you're looking at, okay, well, how are we going to buy a new fire rescue? How are we going to buy a new fire engine? How are we going to fund, you know, important improvements to our roads, et cetera? So, that's, that sort of was the immediate approach for this year, and I think going forward, we'd like to continue that approach. And then, in terms of water and wastewater, there was significant fallout for water and wastewater debt. That's notated in the two budget sections. That, the way we approach that is, is we don't want to lose that capacity in the rate to continue to fund the debt, which we know is right in front of us for both of those departments, for both those enterprises. So, we definitely, we look to have that reserve for treatment plant in both of those budgets. And a component of what's, what we're requesting in those reserve for treatment plants would be that debt fall off.
Thank you.
Does, does everybody understand that? Because that's a really important strategic part of this budget, and it's, and it's brilliant. And I assume you'll talk about that on, on Tuesday as part of the public hearing?
Absolutely, sure.
Anything else? Councilor Sawyer?
I had a question. For taxpayers, I wonder, you know, I seem to remember when we were getting the debt exclusion for the high school. We talked about that a little. That the tax, the tax rates would kind of be fluctuating a little bit, and some would be higher some years, and some would be lower. And I wonder like what the tax rate looks like for twenty-six, or, you know, for the debt exclusion.
So it's definitely a better question for the Chief Assessor, Julie Hobson. But I will say, you know, one of the things that we noted last year in the budget discussion is that, based on the borrowings and where we're at, we believe we've pretty much leveled off on the debt exclusion amount. So, you can kind of tell just from the, the debt amount that's in the budget, it's pretty level at this point because we're, you know, we haven't had to issue an additional borrowing. And with the anticipation of that project closing out and not having to go long on that ban, we really think we've basically leveled out at this point. So, in, in terms of the impact to the taxpayer, we should see, you know, relatively level for the debt exclusion. You know, I don't know the dollar figure, but, and I would recommend a chance to the Chief Assessor, but that's my expectation.
I believe in one of the last conversations, she mentioned we had hit the peak and were, we were past that, that peak point.
Was it the last year or the year before, right?
I believe so, yes.
The last year.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night. Thanks, Mason.
All right, next up.
Is it my budget?
Mason, yeah.
I'll try to be quick because I'm sure, I'm sure we'll run it a little bit behind.
Crowd behind you staring at you.
Yeah, I know, right? So, I mean, my budget, not all that different than the ones we've talked about, is relatively straightforward. These, you know, it's, it's salaries, salaries and, and, you know, associated benefits and then really the maintenance of our MIS department. So for us, the biggest change year to year is sort of that maintenance of software. So just the rising costs of software as we've added additional technology within the city. There's also additional costs for that. We recognize savings in other places and believe in the long-term savings. But this is, you know, relatively consistent year to year between five, around five to seven percent increase year over year. And there were some additional, additional services this year. We've added on Tyler Content Manager as part of our accounting system. So we believe we're going to be able to streamline a lot of our, a lot of our contracts, our contract processes, purchase order process and everything like that through that software. Additionally, we did add electronic permitting for the Fire Prevention Department. So, originally, the only electronic, full electronic permitting that we had was through the Building Inspection Department. And so, this year, we made it a goal to, to bring on an additional apartment and, and department. And over time, we're looking to really, you know, streamline all of our permitting processes in the city and try to get everything digital and through electronic filing. That's kind of, you know, along the lines of some of the other items you've heard about digitization in the city and just making sure we're in the modern era and trying to make it as easy as possible for our residences and businesses. So, there's costs associated with that. Maybe we'll make these costs, upfront costs. But, but we do believe long-term, there's, you know, there's a lot of benefits and it's, you know, it's, it's really important. In terms of, you know, one item you might see there, it's really only the second year, the emergency alert system. So, I don't know if people are sick of it by now, but you're probably getting texts all the time, you know, all the notifications that go out, trying to keep everyone informed. So that, that's the annual maintenance to allow for, you know, us to basically blast out any type of message to residents, businesses, et cetera, to basically keep them informed of everything that's going on. So as, something as small as, hey, there's a hydrant being flushed right over here, you're going to know about it. So, I think that's well worth the money. And then.
That's a feedback, Ben, for that. Do people seem more informed, or, I mean?
Yeah, I think, I think definitely with, with our water department and a lot of the stuff that they're constantly doing, having to put out notice, I think there's been a lot of, a lot of benefit there. We have a really high usage rate of that, of that service. I, I'd love to get the, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I'd love to get those numbers and be happy to forward those to the council about how many subscribers we have on there. You know, prior to getting that alert system, we were, we had a very limited subscriber base to our online alerts, I believe, like five hundred. And the cost to even increase just there, to have it go through the website, was basically the same cost as, as also adding on this additional unlimited subscriber count service where we can blast it out to phones, emails, et cetera. So if anyone's not signed up, definitely encourage you to go on the city website, sign up. You can, you can also pick like what types of notifications you want to receive. So, you know, if you're really interested in certain boards and commissions, or, you know, certain, you want water department notifications, police department, fire department notifications, you can, you sort of pick and choose, and, or you can get everything, so.
And we have the city, the city social media person too, driving the city Instagram and Facebook page. And that adoption seems, are, are people following that?
Yeah, I think it's, I think there's been a lot of benefits to what Kay, the work that Kalen's doing as part of the economic development team under the mayor's, mayor's office. There's definitely a lot of buy-in. I think we've recognized, actually just meeting with the zoo staff, one of the things that they said is when they have new animals and they, you know, they post pictures, they have Kalen assist them posting photos online, things like that, it draws people in. So, social media is something I definitely think, you know, this is a real value, a real asset if we use it appropriately. And I think that's a good example of how it can be used to maximize, you know, the benefits to the residents, but also, you know, the use of the services in the city. And I think Kalen does a great job, is really supportive of all the departments in the city and kind of making that happen. And she's really talented, uses, is really good at the graphic design and those pieces. So I think that's a, it's a really, really nice, nice thing that we've sort of grown in the city in the last few years.
Very cool. President Felicia?
With Kalen, not only is, is she great with all that, she's probably one of the hottest working people in the city. She's not uncommon if there's an event in the middle of the winter, she's going up and down with flyers for the Winter Night Festival. So, she's been a true, true great addition to the city.
Yeah, absolutely. I think she taps into a, a part of the residency that maybe wasn't informed of what was going on in the city before. You know, just with just changing demographics. I think, so I think that's, you know, I think we have to, we have to make sure that we're kind of serving all the residents, you know, across all age groups, demographic groups, and I think, you know, I think that gives us an ability to do that.
Councilor Waterman?
Yes. I was wondering if you would like to address any issues around parking that you might be looking forward to in the coming year?
Yeah, absolutely. So I, the Parking Revolving Fund and Parking is managed under my department. So, we have the Parking Clerk, who is under DPW, but also reports to me for parking. And then we do outsource our Parking Enforcement to Passport Labs, who provides all the data processing and the software for Parking Enforcement Services, and then they And then they subcontract for the actual enforcement officers. The subcontractor's been going through some staffing changes a little bit recently. So there's always, you know, there can always be hiccups there. But the value of having, having that outside enforcement contract is huge to the city. It's in terms of the affordability, but also just the fact that it only requires, you know, basically funding one person and there's always, they always have a backup. There's always additional folks. So that's a lot more affordable for us and, you know, cost effective to actually ensure that there's, you know, we're maximizing the parking and the, you know, the use of those lots and the off-street parking within the, and the on-street parking within the city. In terms of parking in general, the, we're working, my office is working with, you know, Chris, our Economic Development Director, Gary Erasian, Planning, Planning Director, and as well as our Purchasing Department to essentially get a feasibility out on the street and ongoing to look at potential decking options on the existing off-street lots. So we obviously have the Sanford Garage, which is essentially two stories. It's the one deck with the base level. And then looking at that North Main Street Lot and the Sanford, Sanford Lot, if there's potential to add additional spacing, decking, if, if the garage is currently structurally sound enough to add additional decks, what would that cost look like? What would that actually look like to increase that downtown capacity? And then, as well as just even at the most baseline level, is there better ways to sort of have layouts within the parking lot, striping the lots and making sure those, you know, sort of maximize the spaces available? The, I'd like to do a little bit better job of maintaining the city lots in terms of, you know, ensuring that we have, you know, proper curbing, puddles filled in, ensuring it's the, you know, the best kind of possible. It can be a little bit of a challenge with the garage, just in where it is. It's prone to flooding issues. So that's one of those things we're going to look at closely with, through bringing in a, you know, structural engineer. That's kind of my general comments about, you know, what we're doing there. Yeah.
Thank you. President Delicia?
Thank you. So thanks for bringing up the parking, Ty. Just a couple of quick questions. So a lot of rumors, you know, Facebook active place. Is there truth in the rumor that the parking folks are getting commissioned per ticket issued?
Per ticket issued? Yeah, so the, so Passport Labs does the, Passport Labs is a large parking company. They, per, per ticket, they have a per-ticket cost. It's, I believe it's one ninety-one per ticket. Doesn't necessarily incentivize, that's for the, that's for the data processing. So they basically host everything, cloud-based service. We don't have the technology internally to manage that.
But it's not a commission for the parking?
It's not a commission for the enforcement, no.
I wanted to dispel that because I've been hearing that a lot.
Yeah, no, absolutely not. They're also, they manage all the, the processing between the RMV, the letters that go out on delinquent violation notices, which, you know, one of the things is the integration with the RMV has been really important for the city. There's, there's individuals who've, you know, have thought potentially, I can get away with parking tickets, but never pay them, right? And then, you know, it comes up that your, the RMV's flagged your license or your vehicle for non-renewal because you have a bunch of outstanding parking tickets, maybe a, maybe a ticket in another municipality and you thought you could just get away from it because it was a piece of paper that a city put on, on your car and, you know, you violated the city ordinance. But ultimately, you know, it, it enforces those ordinances by ensuring that people actually, you know, pay those outstanding tickets, even if it's three, five, six, ten years later. So that's been really important for the city because our outstanding enforcement liability in terms of uncollected ticket revenues from the past few decades is, is around half a million dollars. And that's been, that's been actually turning a corner because of the integration with the RMV. So that's something that our contractor also provides where the city, the city internally wouldn't really have the capabilities to do that. And without that, it really would be sort of a free-for-all, which, you know, individuals who come to the city, violate the city ordinance, you could essentially never have to pay for it.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yeah.
One more, sorry. So, so thank you for that. And certainly in my day job, I see that quite frequently, not just here, but a lot of other municipalities. Council Holmes recently introduced business, I know this has been important to myself, to Council LaVoy, I believe Council Reynolds as well, about bringing the parking back under the police department. Makes sense, I mean theoretically, but there's a lot of moving parts. The reason I bring this up now is just in line with that discussion. But do you see this as something that could happen in future budgets? And what are, how do we get there? Because I think it just makes sense.
Yeah, so to respond to that, I, so I would argue, I don't think the city's quite there yet because I do think it would take about three, at least three enforcement officers to really, to really operate that level of enforcement. You know, even just two at a minimum, just to make sure that you have someone on the street every day. That, you know, like I said, the, the thing about having outside enforcement, they only, can only bill for the hours that they work, right? So if it's, you know, if it's monsooning, we don't have, we don't have to pay them to come in and, and, you know, and ticket essentially. If there's issues with the machines, they can stay away from the lots. Like there's, there's a lot of things that we have sort of control over. And then additionally, there's no sort of liability for sick vacation, someone going out on comp. There's also not really any insurance liability. There's a lot of costs that are sort of hidden anytime you have city staff performing additional services. And, you know, if, if we'd be looking at having police officers do that, I mean, the cost, it would cost twice as much just to have one officer on the street, you know, let alone two. So it's something that, you know, it's definitely worth, worthy of a conversation, I think, long-term. I think in the moment we're in right now, I don't know if the city has the capacity to really take on these different costs. I would, I would strongly say that the city doesn't have the capacity to take on those costs. But I think long-term, it's always worth exploring, right? There was a reason that the city got away from in-house enforcement years ago and that was, you know, because the costs were, became so expensive. And then additionally, we'd still have to essentially have a, a management company to, to manage the software, to provide the, you know, the, provide the ticketing software, provide the, the management and the integration with the RMV. So we'd still be paying probably thirty grand just for that. And that excludes sort of the forty grand, forty-five grand that we're paying for the enforcement.
I'm still advocating for it, for the discussion.
Understood, I understood, right? It's obviously worth exploring. I think we're not quite there yet, but I think it's worth the conversation.
Well, that's why I thought it was, it was wise that Council Holmes brought it in when she did because I think it got the conversation started. So I think it, you know, just my two cents.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, we're in the, we're about to enter the second year of a three-year, second year of a three-year contract for that enforcement services. So I think really a good time to, to review. It would be over the next year to figure out if, you know, in FY twenty-eight, if that's sort of the direction we want to go. So I do think, I think for FY twenty-six and twenty-seven, I think it's still beneficial for us to, to keep that as third-party enforcement. But I do think that's, that's really the time to explore it.
All right, and we are about fifteen minutes past our time. And so Council LaVoy, I told you you could go next, but if you have a.
Oh, wait, but we can hoopla.
Quick question, and then just out of respect.
Yeah, even if we can start the discussion with the, with the agency about warnings, because I did ask about that, like, do they ever give warnings? And I was told they, they do not. So I think even if we can have a discussion about what we're looking for here in the community, I think it would be helpful.
Can I, may I respond to that thing?
Sure.
So I, I will say, as a function of the ordinance, if we, if the ordinance was changed to allow for warnings, we could do that, right? They enforce the ordinance as it's written. The ordinance is pretty, pretty direct in that there's, you know, there's violations and associated fines with those violations. So if that's some, that's something that, you know, could be reviewed and sort of immediately implemented. Just, just to be clear upfront.
Thank you. I think you're doing a great job. We're really lucky to have you here, Mason.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Outstanding. And next up is Schools. And Mark, welcome.
Mason did a good job by himself.
I was like, yeah, I'm all alone up there.
I was like, you know, you're talking about.
Bill, you joining us, Rob?
Nope.
No.
Welcome, and I apologize everywhere. I apologize for running a little bit late. So, welcome. And what page are you on? So I, I do appreciate every year the discussion about budget, funding issues as compared to budget issues. And you guys always making the best of what, what you have. So based on, on that, with, with the limited budget, in recognizing that, that there is still a serious funding issue at the, at the state level and, and very much recognizing that that is a systemic issue, in, in wanting to sort of recognize that again. Go ahead, let's, let's talk about the, the budget.
Sure. But, you know, just a very quick overview. Because, you know, a eight percent increase, eight million dollars seems quite generous. Chairman Kobus is kind of referring to our kind of chronic trying to provide some context and saying that, you know, we, we were funded as an average school district in the state of Massachusetts, we would have about twenty million more dollars in our budget than we do. We are on a per-student basis and on a net school spending basis, quite, but are quite lowly relative to the communities in Massachusetts. But again, as Chairman Kobus points out, that's, that's more of a revenue issue. That is not an intent in any way by the city or the people of the city of Attleboro. We are feeling very fortunate this year to be able to receive, you know, eight million dollars. We, a lot of that was driven by state funding because of some dramatic changes that have taken place over the last two years with the new, new high school. So the charter schools who are, you know, kind of taking our students regularly, lost, I want to say, three or four hundred students who returned to Attleboro and that increase in enrollment drove a very generous increase in state funding for the school district. So we, you know, we have to accommodate those students and have to hire teachers and, and that sort of stuff to get them in a classroom. But, you know, our fixed costs don't change. So we do receive some benefit from that influx of enrollment. The other, the other point to make, just again, just for context, you know, of the eight million, two and a half million that are taken away by, you know, the health insurance issue that affected everybody in the city of Attleboro. So we want to just make that point as well. We've been able to do quite a bit in the district. We, we continue to sort of ramp up a little bit on our maintenance efforts. The new high school, while a tremendous gift, is quite labor-intensive in terms of maintaining the environmental systems in the building. So we've, we've had to actually hire an HVAC person specific to the high school to keep that, that whole machine going while our existing HVAC person sees to the rest of the other eight buildings in the district. We have been pretty successful for the first time in a long time in bringing new, new folks in. As I said, we had to hire some teachers to accommodate the influx in, in enrollment. We've been able to decrease our dependency on contracted service providers in our special education program for the first time since the pandemic, which is just a wonderful benefit to the district, bringing people, employees back in rather than contracted service providers. So we are, we're, you know, happy and, and looking forward to having a very successful year next year.
President Delicia, sorry.
Got a lot of questions. Mark, good to see you.
Good to see you.
So a quick question, when we're talking about charter schools, are we seeing an increase or a decrease in students that are leaving Attleboro to go to the charter schools?
We had about three, I don't know what the number is, something between three and four hundred students leave Foxborough Charter. They got, they got wiped out. And that, that's reflected also in, in the city's tuition assessments for charter schools as well as the reimbursement for the tuitions at charter schools. So they, you know, if you, if you look at the last eighteen months, twenty-four months, the, the numbers are dramatic.
Compliment. Just one last follow-up.
Sure, absolutely.
I know there was some payments to Bristol Aggie. Are we still, what are those payments looking like and?
Yeah, so one of the things you'll note is the decrease in spending in vocational school. That's entirely a reflection of a decrease in the tuitions we're paying. We've had a pretty interesting three-year stint with Tri-County. They are no longer accepting students from Attleboro.
We do.
Well, we established five new programs in our CTE operation and a lot of those were the very programs that people were leaving for. So now they're staying and, you know, the numbers have dwindled to the point, had dwindled to the point where Tri-County just said, this isn't making sense anymore. And, and that was that. So that's a wonderful outcome. Bristol Aggie, we still have fifteen or so, I think, going there, which, which is, which is, you know, not a significant burden. What did happen though is Bristol Aggie upgraded their facilities and they assessed the city of Attleboro for that, that upgrade. And it's pretty substantial. And that's based on enrollment. So that enrollment is also decreasing, but just not dramatically. It's one or two students a year.
Sure.
And are we looking at any changes to Medicaid this year?
We have not been made aware of any changes to Medicaid so far this year. That, that doesn't mean it can't happen or won't happen. As you know, they pull plugs with about fifteen minutes notice. But, but we haven't, we haven't been made aware of anything. There, there hasn't been any kind of discussion nationally about, you know, schools and Medicare getting, getting impacted. But that, again, that doesn't guarantee anything.
Thank you.
Council Angela?
Thanks, Council Kobus. Hi, thanks for coming in. Could you touch a little bit on special education? It's been a bit of a hot topic this past year and, and obviously with everything going on and after, you know, post-COVID and stuff, it just.
Sure. Yeah, you know, we, to some degree, we struggled but worked very, very hard to, you know, maintain services both through the, through the pandemic and then immediately after. You know, nobody was real excited about going back to work in any capacity after the pandemic. So, you know, we had to, you know, we have to provide the services. As, as Superintendent likes to say, you know, we have six thousand students walk through the door every day and we have to, we have to provide for them. So, you know, we, we did a little workaround and hired a bunch of contracted service providers to make sure that the services that are required by that population are received. And we did that. And thankfully, like I said, most recently, and this is relatively new, you know, we've been able to actually bring some people back in who, whose positions have been vacant for, you know, two years, three years, and therefore relieve ourselves of the burden of hiring a contracted service provider to provide those services. You know, it's, it's profoundly better to have an employee there. They establish relationships with the students. The service providers are kind of in and out pretty, pretty quickly. So we're thrilled by that and we hope that trend continues. But that was a, from a finding employees to provide those services, it was, it was a struggle for, you know, three or four years, very difficult. Our out-of-district placements have, have grown, but not, not anything like what's happened on the homeless side, the homeless, homeless side. That we've gotten, you know, we get groups of people in in a week, you know, ten kids, you know, it's like. But, but the special education students who are going to out-of-district placements, you know, have, haven't been growing rapidly. We have struggled with special education transportation, primarily because it's a, it's sort of unregulated. It's, this, and again, coming out of the pandemic, the providers kind of shrank. And so the people who still did it every day had the ability to kind of set the market. And again, that's starting to kind of wear off. We're starting to see providers who are coming to us. We're starting to see providers who are coming to us trying to solicit business because things have kind of leveled out a little bit. So we don't anticipate anything extraordinary happening in special education over the next year or two. You know, we, we've made some modest changes to how we do things. We've shut down our in-house transportation services, which were terribly convenient, but a difficult management proposition. And so that'll be all vendor based in terms of, because of the more stability in the vendor market going forward. And we look forward to that. We don't anticipate there being a transportation problem next year.
Councilor Tavarez.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Question on transportation as it relates to McKinney-Vento. And I think you, you started to address part of that with Councilor Angelo's last question. But just curious, and I'm not sure where this might be represented in the budget. But can you speak to whether you foresee that stabilizing? Are we seeing dramatic increases in those costs to comply with that? What's that looking like moving forward?
Part of that will be editorializing, I think. But so, you know, prior to the pandemic and initially coming out of the pandemic, that population was fairly stable, not, not tremendously stable, but nothing like what we see today. And, and that we got sort of punched in the nose a year after the pandemic was over with just this wave. The federal funding started to wear out and we just got this wave of students. And so I think our spending went from like half a million dollars to seven hundred thousand dollars and now it's over a million dollars. So that, that flood of homeless demand has not let up, unfortunately. And, and I don't, you know, personally don't think that the economic environment is going to avail itself to helping in that area at all over the next three years. That's going to be a challenge.
So speaking of the, the pandemic and the, the funds that has started to come in during the, the pandemic, I know, I, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, but that was the last year that we had the funding for all of those pandemic positions. And it, it was a big deal that, hey, this is the last year that we're going to be able to fund these positions. And now that, that, that funding has run out, what does that look like? Can you talk about that a little bit? Because I, I remember that was a big deal last year and.
That's a great point. FY twenty-five, the year we're currently in, was the first year we've run without support of what for the schools was called S R funds.
S R funds, that's right.
And so we, we digested through, you know, so those were around for three or four years. So through that time, the first thing we didn't do thankfully is, you know, we didn't just go wholesale and, and bring in as many bodies as we could because that would be, that would have been a liability at the end when this, when this funding ran out. So I, I thought we were thoughtful, you know, and that takes the cooperation of the entire staff there, the sped director, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, to, to make sure again that our students are receiving all the services they need, but that we're not putting ourselves in a position to really suffer when, when the funds dry up. So we were able to digest everything we were doing this year completely. And then twenty-six, where again, by sheer, by sheer demand and the enrollment change, we're going to be able to digest the requirements of that as well, so.
So we'll be able to keep those positions for, for FY twenty-six again?
Forever, yeah.
Forever? Okay.
So we're, we're, we're not going to be falling off a cliff financially because of what we went through during COVID funding.
That's, that's great.
Councilor Sawyer.
Hi, I, I had a question about, you know, after the pandemic and while it was going on, there was a lot of online learning, of course. And I know that you do like the ABA courses. And I just wondered if that is still going. Is that a full year of school? Is it just part of school? Is it like you can end your entire year of school in that?
Yeah, that, that's been interesting. You know, so there have always been students who had social emotional challenges to going to school. That's, that's a thing. That's always been there. That's, that was not created by the pandemic. The pandemic exacerbated it quite a bit. So as a district, as it became obvious that there was technology available to deal with that, remote learning and curriculum that was established and all, all that kind of stuff, you know, we sort of dove in and, and felt there was a, you know, especially during the pandemic, a very strong need for this sort of thing. So we established the ABA, which is a, a virtual school. And as we've come out of the pandemic, we've certainly had some melt in terms of the students taking advantage of that structure. But, you know, there's, I don't know, a couple dozen, thirty students who probably would either be homeschooled or just not go without it right now. So we're pretty committed to it, you know, and we've learned how to do it better and will continue to do that. But I, I think it's a, you know, it's going to be a pretty permanent part of what we do just because, you know, those students weren't unique to the pandemic. They, they've always been there. We, we didn't have good answers for that prior to the pandemic. So thankfully, the technology kind of jumped and we got on board and we're, we're having success with how we're doing it now.
Councilor Lavoie.
Thank you, Chair Cobus. Thanks for coming out.
Sure.
Um, could you just touch on the Attleboro Technician Institute? I think was just the second class that just came through. But you know, how enrollment's looking on that? If we're seeing an increase, how funding is for that, things of that nature?
Yep, so our CTE director, Jeremy Gay, had the foresight to apply for a state grant that funded the program entirely for the first two cohorts as a jobs effort. The enrollment is, is capped at forty-eight students per session. And, you know, the demand is well beyond that. So we're now in a, in a position where we have to try to figure out how to go forward. You know, a more obvious approach is to turn it into a tuition program where, you know, you pay a modest amount of money relative to what you'll end up getting and at the end, you know, be certifiable, licensable, having an ability to become an apprentice, all those kinds of things where, you know, after the last class, you're, you're, you're ready to go. It's been very popular, you know, people are calling him all the time about it. And, you know, we're certainly going to continue doing it.
Personally, I think it's an amazing program. Have we thought about the opportunity for local, regional businesses to sponsor tuition for a student? You know, maybe for HVAC, something like that. If, you know, a local provider would sponsor that cost. And then obviously they're, they're continuing education. But I don't know if we've looked into options like that, if it's feasible.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that's something could be thought about. You know, we, we have committees for each of our CTE programs made up of local businesses in that area. So there's a plumbing, you know, an electrical, HVAC. And they discuss that kind of stuff all the time. I'm not, I'm not, I don't attend those meetings. But, you know, they, they provide a lot of input on the, the curriculum and the approach taken in the program in the schools. And again, this being a new thing, the, the, the night school is, I'm sure they're, they're kind of noodling around what's the best approach. Because again, is it, there's a high demand for those skills, first of all, and then a high demand for learning those skills. So that, you know, that's a, something we, we will certainly be able to leverage and.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? Perfect. Do you have any other comments or are there any sort of big concerns that, that you have with the FY twenty-six budget?
No, no, we, again, we have enjoyed the partnership with the city most recently and, and thought this year was the best year yet. We look forward to doing even better next year in terms of working together. I'm not saying about the numbers, I'm just saying working together. We're, we're very grateful for the team the city has in City Hall. And really.
No, we appreciate it and appreciate you respecting, saying that and respecting working within the, the system and working within, recognizing that there is systemic issues with the, the funding.
Right. I, I do want to make the committee aware, this is my last one of these. Brittany will be the Director of Finance for the Attleboro Public Schools starting July first. So I'll be doing some operational stuff.
Like to recognize that this is the last one of these easy budget hearings. Here on board, it's. Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Chairman Cobus, I didn't know if I could address your committee for three minutes, please.
Yes.
A little bit beyond, I'm going to use some of the school budget data, but it's a little bit beyond the school budget itself, if I may.
Sure.
And this has to do with health insurance and it's a problem that everyone in Massachusetts is having and is going to have and it's going to get worse in the future.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I got it, thank you.
So as most of you know, the city is looking at about a fourteen or fifteen percent increase in health insurance. And the revenue is growing at about four percent. So.
You guys already have a long night, so I don't want to keep you too long. What I, I started this after our joint presentation back in the Bray, Bray Auditorium a few months ago. The city has the same problem that all three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in Massachusetts have, and it's the cost of prescription drugs. And what I've put in front of you is numbers just simply from the school point of view. And my request is that once the budget is done, and you have so much on your plate right now and I fully respect all that, is for you to work with the folks that do the, because I know the city is self-insured and there's a group that monitors the trust fund. But currently, if I only use the school committee numbers, the school budget, excuse me, numbers, we're at just over fourteen percent last year. We're looking at almost fifteen percent next year. If you go out three or four years from now, that number goes to almost twenty percent of our budget. Now, as we presented at the joint meeting, three percent of our budget is discretionary. So in three or four years, that discretionary part of our budget will be eaten up by medical insurance. If you look three years beyond that, we're at twenty-six percent of our budget. I don't know exactly what that would mean. I know it would be very bad. Every city and town in the, in the state of Massachusetts has the same problem. And within our lifetime, if you go to the very bottom of the page that I just handed you, medical insurance will be a hundred and two percent of our perceived budget. Means we will not have a budget. So my request is that once the budget is passed and the rest of it, that you work with the administration and anyone else. I've shared this with the mayor and, you know, we're, we've, in the one city, one budget meeting, we've had conversations about the fact that this is a train that's coming at all of us full steam and there's nothing we can do about it. I have sat down with our state representative. He is very concerned about it also. I'm not sure there's anything that Representative Hawkins can do about it. But this is a train that's coming at us full speed. You can take the city's budget numbers for the total health insurance and you can, you can create the same spreadsheet that I've just handed you and it won't get any better. I respect the fact that you folks have these great conversations about parking and the rest of all this. There's no conversation about this happening publicly. So I'm going to sacrifice myself and ask you to please have this conversation publicly because it's coming at us, there's not a whole lot we can do, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. President Felicia.
Real quick, I don't want to belabor. So Bill, thanks for coming down. You and I had the same conversation just a week ago. We brought this up and we approached this earlier in the evening with Devon and Mason. I've actually had some other side conversations with Deb as you and I've kind of discussed. I think that there is, this has to be front and center of a lot of our financial discussions going, going forward. Because as I always say, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. We've got to see what we can do because you're right. I think the speeding train coming at us is a very good analogy. So thank you for this.
I mean, the, the conversation I had with Representative Hawkins is I said that if growth, if projected growth at the most could be four percent a year, I said to him respectfully, I said, you and your, you and your colleagues need to pass a law in the state of Massachusetts that caps medical insurance increases at four percent a year for municipalities. That's it. Medical insurance companies get four percent and that's it. Because otherwise, we're done.
Councilor Angelo.
Thanks, Phil. So what was Representative Hawkins' response and any plans for him to present this or do anything?
He agreed with me and that we all had a problem.
But no thoughts on what he would do about it or?
And that's not negative to Representative Hawkins. I, I, I very much appreciated his, his attendance and, and his acceptance of the fact that there was a problem coming. But this is much larger than all of us. And I simply, all I'm trying to do tonight is make sure that everyone knows that it's coming. And I, and I truly do not have a great solution to the problem. But I can't sit back and just know that there's a problem coming at us full steam and not at least make people aware of it.
And, and I appreciate you raising this issue. And, and I agree that this is big, bigger than something that we can solve here in the city. But it is something we need to be sort of banging the drum all the time and, and addressing.
I appreciate your time, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
And thank you, thank you for raising it and sort of escalating and, and sort of doing your part to bang the drum. Thank you. Any other comments or?
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Good night, thank you, thank you.
Thanks for that. I apologize that we are running late. Is it?
We did so good last week, we set the expectation.
I, I apologize and welcome and.
No apology needed.
All right, so let's, what page are we on? Twenty-four?
One, two, four.
One, two, four. And whenever you are ready.
So the recreation budget this year is basically level funded, but with the, because it isn't level funded, there's a decrease. The largest change with the budget this year is a staffing decrease. We're going from nine FTEs to eight FTEs. And that decision was made, as you know, last year we had a retirement and another loss in the department. And we promoted from within to fill the foreman positions. So we. and we promoted from within, um, to fill the foreman positions, so we took the year to evaluate and see where we wanted to go, and we decided to not fund, um, one of the FTA, FTA positions and to go with two seasonal. The staff, the department has run historically in the past with nine FTEs and one seasonal to get us through the busy season. So, um, uh, it was a mutually agreed upon move to reduce by one, and we're doing fine. Everyone is comfortable with it, we're saving some money, and we're running more efficiently. So that's the biggest change with the budget. Everything else is level funded. I went up in a couple of places where everybody else is going up in professional services, went down in a couple of places where we could save a little bit of money. But I'm very comfortable with it at this point after being here for a year, so I'm open to any questions that you have. You can't let me off that easy. Anyone wanna talk about fireworks?
You're killing it. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you.
I have something.
Counselor Waterman.
I just wanted to compliment you for your working with the senior center and also in in their effort to do, uh, the tax program.
Sure, absolutely.
That was really helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, I'm a collaborator and networker by nature. And when I came in, I wanted to meet with the other community-facing department heads to see where we might be able to complement each other's efforts and how can we, um, help out, and I have parking, they don't. Um, and after hosting the tax, the tax aid program, I can completely understand how they would take over that entire building. So them having the entire bottom floor, they were happy, we were happy to have them, a lot of relationship building. And there's more awareness too on what recreation does within that demographic now too.
Thank you.
Counselor LaVoy.
Just a brief comment, thank you for coming down. Just very impressed with all the new program add-ons. I know you worked hard to help be kind of the overflow for the senior center and getting some seniors into, you know, your facilities and helping there, so I just wanna commend you on that. And I am very hopeful that all three pools will be online. It looks to be that way, but I don't wanna speak too soon. So I just commend you and, uh, definitely looking forward to a lot of the preventive maintenance side of things. That's huge for me on the municipal level that we don't see often, so.
Barring any technical issues at any of the pools, all three will be open, we are staffed, we have the lifeguards that we need. But you can never really be sure until you flip those switches on. Anything can happen, but with the renovations that happened at Briggs last year, that's all, that's pretty much a brand-new pool for the foreseeable future. The dispatcher pool under the, um, contract of the DCR, that's getting all new pumps and everything right now as well. So that pool is, and Dodgeville, knock on wood, that's actually our easiest pool to run. So, um, should be, should be fine. And preventative maintenance, uh, yeah, that's definitely gonna be my focus over the next year with, uh, our new foreman Brendan. He's, brings a lot to the table. And after taking the first year, now we're really gonna work together to get a lot of the preventive maintenance on rotating schedules to make sure everything's addressed in a timely manner.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Angelo.
Thanks, Counsel Kowalski. I don't know, um, on the pools, speaking of the pools and everything, are they saltwater? And if they're not, is there plans on saltwater? Cause, cause saltwater pools are like, maintenance is incredibly cheaper than regular chlorinated pools. And I I can speak of that, cause I have a saltwater pool myself, going from a chlorine pool.
That from person, that's personal. So coming from the the background that I have at the Y, we've had saltwater pools that we then pay to bring back to chlorine. Because of all of the, that's a conversation that we could talk for days on. There's benefits to.
Well, you wanted some tough questions, so. You asked for it.
Yeah, I I I would happily.
We get days.
I would happily put something together, we can, you, the benefits of saltwater, one hundred percent, but then the maintenance of them, when it becomes commercial, is, yeah, compared to chlorine's cheaper.
How many visitors do you have typically per year?
No. Um, I I don't have that number off the top of my head.
I was gonna say, we can have that many people come through your.
We're, right now, like, we're looking at enforcing the no T-shirts, like, because of the amount of back washes that we have to do because of the cotton, I mean, and that, it's, there's a lot that goes into it. It's certainly worth research and discussion if you wanna continue the discussion.
I was, I was curious. Counselor Sawyer.
Hi, Chrissy. I also think that it's great with the all the new programs and, um, events and bringing people in to, you know, doing the disc golf. I thought that was great to like bring that, those things in, but you know, what's up with all this, um, pickleball? I mean, like, seriously.
Well, pickleball and disc golf are the two fastest-growing sports in the country. And disc golf is giving, um, us an opportunity for parks and rec to work together. So I have had the benefit of hosting, um, Spencer's, uh, Disc Golf Putting League at the, uh, rec center. It was insanely popular. He raised a lot of money for the new course. And as you guys know, he's my newest rec commissioner now too. I needed to harness that energy before someone else snatched it up. But yeah, it's, it's a great sport. It's active but passive in a way where it's not really interfering with the the landscape that is the beautiful park of Highland Park, um, but it is still active with walking and exercise too. Uh, and then pickleball, it's still growing, you know, it's growing and it's not gonna stop growing. It really isn't. I mean, you've got, you're, even your tennis players that retire into pickleball. So I know that the etiquette between tennis players and pickleball players is, can be a little bit dicey. We don't put our pickleball players on our tennis courts here in Attleboro. Um, I have definitely been taught that lesson. But, um, it is continuing to grow. And Attleboro, um, as you know, the pickleball courts are about four to five years old now. Um, so when I came in, they had reached the point, in my opinion, where they, they were ready for a little bit more support from the recreation department to take them to their next level. Cause last year we had our first pickleball tournament, we're working on the second one now. But now, everyone that plays pickleball in Attleboro, they now feel more comfortable when they're out traveling to join pickleball tournaments in other communities, because they've now done it at home. And the pickleball advisory group that I put together, that, it's just a lovely, lovely community. They're raising money for us too, so you gotta love that.
Outstanding. Counselor Tavoris.
Um, so I have two questions for you, Christie. So one's just for my own edification, and if this is more appropriate for for Mason, feel free. But, um, if I, if I heard correctly, the the plan is moving forward with the current, um, lineup of full-time employees. It's two seasonal, um, positions, okay. So is that funded through some separate line item other than salary part-time?
That's, um, so if you look at the fourth line, it's seasonal labor.
Got it, okay. Alright, I just didn't know what that meant. Okay, please, got it, got it, makes sense. And then, um, second question was just a general question about the BarTech Center. Any impending things that we should be concerned about or that you? Okay, well, I'll let you take it away.
I'll, I mean, I'll let Chrissy take away. It's pretty clear in the CIP, um, there's some big items in there related to ADA upgrades, HVAC. So definitely some big expenses, and so the city's gotta determine if, you know, the BarTech is, BarTech's gonna be the place that we continue to occupy going forward and, you know, depending on that determination, I think, you know, there's some significant investments that would need to be made over there. If Chrissy has anything else.
Boiler, lighting, HVAC, um, we're looking at VRF systems, try to do it the 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 most, um, economically feasible way to do it. Um, but yeah, it turns into a pizza oven in the the summertime and it's, I mean, I'm, I had my SpaceEater on today. So it's cold and then it's hot. Um, and then the ADA compliance, we can't use the third floor. It's beautiful, and I could do so many programs up there, but we can't use it right now. And then the gym floor will also need to be replaced at some point too.
And any long-term sort of opinions about where the rec center should be, long-term? I'm talking more than a year, three years, maybe five years now.
In what aspect? In programming? Oh, location?
Physically speaking, yeah, yeah.
I, I think it's a gem. I I, it's, it has a longstanding history with, I mean, a lot of the the youth sports that happen there. I I personally, if that's what you're asking, my personal opinion, after being here for a year and learning this community, it it's a gem in the city and it's worth the investment.
Thank you.
I agree. Anything else? Outstanding. Any concerns for the year or anything else you wanna raise with us?
I mean, can I, I, well, I'd like to just at least touch on fireworks real quick, because I had a clarity moment last week. When I started, I was pretty much ball and told that you're doing fireworks. And I was the new kid, I didn't know the history, I didn't know the players, I didn't know the city yet. Much different now, uh, and the Memorial Day Parade was pretty much my moment of clarity. I think I've shared with you all that I've really fallen in love with the committee and building this little small community of people that are just so passionate about this event. I fell in love with that, but seeing them at the Memorial Day Parade, having the opportunity to walk around the the recreation truck and collect donations, I get to hear a lot of the conversations that they were having with residents. And people were putting money, I mean, we raised five hundred and thirty-nine dollars in cash on the parade route. I thought that was very impressive. And the conversations that happened as people were putting money into those buckets was, thank you for doing this, so excited to bring it back. And it really, and and the committee themselves, they were the kids on Christmas. So it went from just a piece of this job that I was voluntold to do, to now I really get why we're doing this event. The city really wants this back, and it's something that I feel is special to be part of at that, at this point. And it's something that's been resonating with me since the parade, and I, I guess I'm taking this opportunity to share that with you guys. It's important.
That's absolutely incredible. And, yeah, I'm super excited that it's at Hayward again and.
I don't know if I'm excited about that. I still vote for the high school at some point.
There's something about that walk down the, with the street closed.
That's nostalgia burning.
I just hope that you take that enthusiasm forward, because next year is going to be much more important, in my judgment.
Two-fiftieth, yes. We're already talking about it.
I really wanna see the city celebrate that. At a different level, so I hope you keep your enthusiasm and will continue to lead us in that project.
And if I may to expand on that, I also, I strongly believe the city should also commit to supporting that too. So not just, you know, not just trying to make this larger event on the, you know, the back of of those donations, which I think people will come out enthusiastic for, I do think the city should also actively partake in, um, in funding that, that two-fiftieth effort, so.
I don't recall, was was that in the budget?
So that wasn't due to timing, so we'll look at, you know, when free cash is available in the fall, but I really think that's something the sh- city should, I know it can be difficult conversation, but I think the last couple of years, we've really seen that the residents want it. And so I think, you know, the city should definitely have a, have a, have a role in that. And and I'm the last person to say, hey, we should literally light taxpayer dollars on fire.
But it's a one, this would be a one-time.
Yes.
It's the two-fiftieth. Okay, perfect. Anything else? Outstanding.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
And finally, Derek or John?
Yeah, we're. So you got animal control, then park, and then, uh, zoo. I'm sure animal control will be relatively straightforward. It's on page ninety-two. Yeah, so animal control is essentially level funded from last year with, um, few changes to heat and lighting power due to the increased rate costs, um, and some contractual, uh, changes. That's, uh, essentially it.
Animal control is straightforward. Do you have concerns with animal control?
Quick question.
Counselor LaVoy, yeah.
Thank you. Um, could you just touch on maybe what kind of savings we would see if this played out in your objectives of the zoo veterinarian helping out with some of the other, uh, services for the shelter?
Yeah, I would say it's relative to what we have during the course of the year. So, right now, we contract out to, uh, private vet for any of our vaccines for the animals, spay, neuter. So during the course of a year, it all depends on on what we get in. And what what the friends can help us out with. The friends do an amazing job of helping us out with a lot of veterinary costs, especially with the cat room, uh, and they they do a great job with the dogs as well.
Can I follow up on that?
Please.
Uh, Mason, do you see the potential in like if the zoo was capable of doing that, or would we ever be able to potentially shift that line item back to the zoo instead of putting it back into like the revolving? Like, from that figure we're spending out of, you know, if the zoo's handling the service, can we put that on top of the zoo budget as opposed to just letting it go back into free cash?
Can, alright, can, can I clarify? Sorry, so you say the.
If we didn't have to contract out.
Correct, yeah, like, so what we would pay in like contracting out, like, instead of it just, you know, becoming a savings on the front side, if we kept it funded but into the zoo.
So, I mean, I don't think we'd look at infusing, like an infusion into the zoo revolving fund, but I think recognizing that cost maybe within the Cabron Park Zoo General Fund budget, um, is something we could, we could look at. Also potentially shifting some of the vet salary over, depending on the rate of which, how much work they're performing. So on sort of like a time basis, if you said their five percent of their work is in support of the animal shelter, you could look at shifting, you know, the equivalent amount of salary expense over to the the general fund rather than the revolving fund. So I think that's worth a consideration. Um, in terms of like taking the, taking a credit somewhere, I I don't know if that would really be a.
Yeah, no, yeah, exactly. Not like an exact figure, but some sort of system in place to kind of, you know, recognize the savings.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have worked with the zoo vet to, uh, operate the rabies clinic, which has been really helpful. And we use all those proceeds that go right back and into, uh, the animal control revolving fund, which we utilize to do a lot of these veterinary procedures that we we pay out for. So that has been successful and, you know, we've talked about utilizing the vet ever since I've been here. It's just kind of a, an ongoing conversation, but it it makes a lot of sense, um, in some sort of capacity.
Counselor Angelo, then Counselor, or President Delicia.
Thank you, Counsel Kowalski. Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, uh, rabies vaccine clinic, rabies clinic is is actually a phenomenal thing, and that's done once a year, correct?
Yes.
Is there any possibility of having that a second time? Cause I've had, I've heard from a lot of folks, and I'm highly involved in a lot of, uh, animal rescues and stuff, on like a second one, cause they get, they've gotten down there and the lines are just so long and they couldn't wait, and, I mean, is that possible?
Yeah, it's possible. We can look into it. Um, it all depends on, it, so this is the second year we've run it. And it's all, it's kind of a guessing game of how many people we get, because the vaccines do expire, so we don't wanna buy too much vaccine where it goes to waste, and we don't wanna buy too little where we have people, you know, waiting. Luckily, the vaccine lasts a year, so this year we were able to utilize the leftovers from the previous year, kinda overbought. But we're, it's kind of a gauge on what works every year, and then we can grow and adapt, um, you know, based on what people want and and what we can provide. But it it's an easy enough thing that we can, we could definitely look into running more than one.
And and this one's a little bit more difficult, um, uh, but, um, I know the vet that we use is very convenient, very close by and everything, but, is there any thought to, um, you know, getting some competitive bids or?
We have, we've gone out to a lot of, uh, different area vets. A lot of them don't want to do it. Yeah. They they have enough work or too much work as it is that they don't have the time to, um, to deal with a lot of shelters. A lot of these private vets don't want to deal with the shelters, because it's just, they have an overload of their own clients that they can't, you know, accept anything additionally.
Alright, great, appreciate it, thank you.
President Delicia.
Thanks. So all of a sudden, our brand-new animal shelter is now twelve years old. You know, so usually with buildings, fifteen, twenty years is where you start to really kinda see some of these, um, concerns. Do you have any concerns about the current state?
Yeah, so, um, we've had a lot of issues with the HVAC. I think we've gone to council a couple of times. We've utilized the revolving, um, building fund for some of it. One thing that me and Deb have talked about is amending the ordinance. Uh, right now, the ordinance is ver- very specific for capital projects, so that's anything over ten thousand. We want to amend that to utilize that for capital repairs and maintenance of the building. With the HVAC, we would have loved to just utilize that fund to repair it, but it fell under that threshold and we weren't able to do it, so we had to find other means. So that's something we wanna go forth with, uh, this fiscal year.
Yeah, some of those ordinances are pretty restrictive, so I I think it's worth taking a look at.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilor Kovis. Um, uh, uh, one comment is you have a great group down and you got three animal control offices and and, uh, because everybody knows where I am with, um, animals and stuff, I do get a lot of calls and uh, and all three of them, uh, uh, been great choices and your last addition with Don Lee has been fantastic too and, and so I commend you for a great group down. They do a great job.
You don't have to commend me, you commend them.
Yeah, and they're, they're very, um, very happy with it and, uh, and they do, they really do a great job. Uh, uh, with that being said, um, I know you got a couple of trucks down there that are pretty old and stuff. Is there any plans at some point?
Yeah, so we should be getting a truck, hopefully within the next week. We use a, we utilize a federal, uh, electric vehicle grant. So we're getting in an E-Transit van, which is, which is nice. And that'll most likely replace our, either the Jeep Liberty, which is a hand-me-down or the pickup truck. Um, we will keep the pickup truck as a backup, cause I'm unsure how the electric vehicle thing's gonna work, so we're gonna cover all our bases with that. So that's phase one and, um, you know, um, we do have a second vehicle on capital improvement, so hopefully we'll be able to utilize funding for that in the future. That quite literally, I sent a memo to the mayor today with Derek CC on it for funding to come down to council.
That's awesome.
Next week.
Glad to hear that. Thank you.
All right, perfect. And you wanna move on to parks and forestry?
Yes. So parks and forestry, um, as you can see, most of our, um, you know, budget lines are level funded or slight increases, um, due to contractual costs. Of course, the cost of utilities. There has been some, uh, fluctuation moving these numbers within the line item to, um, more appropriately reflect what their use is for.
Looks like it was an eighty-five percent decrease in parks and forestry.
So the big thing is, is, I mean, uh, so the big thing is, is all the positions that used to be funded under this org for the zoo have been separated out for better, you know, financial picture about what the real cost of the zoo is. And then we've also taken on additional positions onto the general fund for the zoo, so that's all pretty outlined. I'm sure we'll talk about that more. But there was, we did ultimately, we had a vacancy in a foreman position that the administration recommended not funding at, and the initial budget. Um, and that was really due to funding constraints. It's not a question of need. The department needs an additional, additional person. I think Derek can speak to that better than I can. And the last place we really wanted to have to make that move was in park and forestry, but obviously the, the first place we go for closing the gap on funding is vacant positions rather than, you know, current, you know, s- positions that are filled with existing staff. Um, so it really was not, it's not a reflection of what we believe the department needs. It's a reflection of how tight the budget was, um, and an unfortunate decision that had to be made sort of at the eleventh hour and, um, and, you know, when that new growth is certified, you know, I know we've talked about some of the positions that the city needs, but the, really the first priority is, you know, ensuring that park and forestry has the staffing level that they need. So I just wanna put that out there upfront. So yes, the reduction looks crazy because you're seeing, you know, seven hundred, six hundred thousand shift over to zoo.
As far as staffing positions, uh, and, and I know the mayor talked about, oh, the first position I want is the assistant for the budget admin, the second one is either the, for the planning department and, and the third is hers. But it's the first one actually for.
She was referring to that. She's talking about new positions, right? And looking at, you know, new staffing opportunities, but really it's, it's, you know, meeting the existing staffing that we would like to have funded.
Would, would this be the first?
This really is the top priority. Uh, they, I mean, you can, you'll see Derek out there. Yeah, right now I'm the only department without, only laboring department without a foreman, so that means I'm doing double duty. I don't have an assistant either, so I'm, you know, I'm really doing double duty when it comes to a lot of these things, a lot of the foreman roles. You know, my roles, um, so it, it's a little bit of a burden, but, you know, I, I've done it. I've been without the foreman. Um, but it's not ideal. It's not sustainable, so it's not intended to be a long-term. That's very, why very explicitly, you know, in the org chart, it was noted that it was vacant unfunded right now. Because that's a missing piece of the org chart that, that needs to be there. Um, so just upfront.
What are the implications from a union perspective? Wha- what does that mean? To not have a foreman? Are there union implications like?
Well, so the city has, uh, uh, you know, the city's allowed to fund positions, um, based on, you know, available funds, right? Um, you know, the position still exists under the, the, the union's collective bargaining. Um, and, you know, the position's still on our rolls. It's just unfunded at this point. So, you know, the city has the authority to fund or, or not fund positions at, you know, at its discretion. Um, yeah.
Ju- just, were you asking more about, um, taking away unionized labor in, in having Derek double dip?
Well, I wouldn't say go out and do the labor. It's more the, the admin that the foreman would do or, you know, a lot of those other the other duties that don't involve labor.
Right. So I don't know if that's kinda what you.
Uh, I, I wasn't sure if there were implications there that, um, the, that, where we would need to, um, or if you were ever on vacation, like are there concerns there?
Well, the. That already exists. Yeah, like I'm, I'm the last man standing, you know, the secretary's out, uh, I'm the, literally the last man standing, so I have to be here. Um, so, you know, it is what it is.
We'll take the rest of the evening off.
Perfect, uh, perfect attendance this year, so we're good.
So if I can just continue down that line. So I know in my line of work, um, if there's a certain parameter, whereas we have union labor, so I have a CSR three, customer service rep three. Say they're doing fifty percent of the next level ops work for thirty days. They can look at a whole reclassif- uh, reclassification. Is that something we, we need to worry about here or?
So it's sort of the reverse, right? We're, we're talking about, you know, Derek is sort of filling the gap on certain administrative duties that he might be able to have an additional, uh, you know, a, a foreman staff be, he's not doing the labor person, like you said. Um, it's sort of the reverse, right? It's wha- what you're talking about is when you have someone sort of step up into a higher level position. Um, and, and making sure they're compensated appropriately, which, you know, we do try to do within the city and there's also specific language within the union contracts to address those when those come up, but that's more within the bargaining groups, not when it's, you know, a labor two, or, or a department head sort of meeting some of the, the duties that might have traditionally been his foreman.
I can just see where it could get sticky, so thank you for that. I, I, I think that determination is great. Can I ask one more question? So one thing that I know that we do a lot of at Highland is the cross-country meets, right? And, and I noted it in the, in the book. To me, it seems like if that's market or right, that could, especially when you have the Big East Championship.
We're doing, um, uh, Ivy League, not this coming year, but the following fall, we'll have the Ivy League championships. We've hosted the New Mac championships. We're basically a regular for them. Big East, we are in the rotation for the Big East. I think it's every four years they wanna come back here, so. It, the word is spreading on Highland.
And a lot of the high school invitational meets as well.
All the high school, a lot of the Massachusetts, um, inter-scholastic leagues. Um, uh, we, we adjusted our, uh, permit fees to be more appropriate, so that's definitely benefited and, uh, you know, it's definitely making a name for itself, so it's a good addition to the city.
The Highland Invitational is something that, um, a lot of the schools locally look forward to every year, so. I, I just, I was glad to hear you talk about adjusting the permits, cause that's where I was going with that, so.
Yeah, we feel we're, we're fair and it's beneficial for us.
Sure.
One, we've been, this is gonna be the second year with the change and no one's, no one's complained or you know, made us think about it. It's, it is what it is and, you know, people wanna come here, so that's, that's huge.
Of course. Last question. Any more of those flannels, man? Those are pretty, uh.
Thank you, Councilor Kovis. Uh, one comment and one, one question, uh, and two, you, you get a lot of calls from me and again, I appreciate, um, Park and Forestry, uh, uh, they do great work and they've always helped me out and like I said, I'm always bothering you with a bunch of calls and, and you guys always come through, so thank you very much. And I know we've been, I've been peppering you with a lot of questions the last couple of days about the frisbee disc golf and everything. Can you explain that a little bit for anybody's watching, the benefits of it and, um, and the po- obviously the popularity? And the kinda space and non-space that it is taking up at Highland?
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, I think the way it was worded in the paper was a little misleading. It's like Christie was saying, it's a very passive recreational activity that doesn't take up a large uh, footprint within the park. They have something similar at Borderland State Park. They, they'll set these courses within woodlands in a lot of different places. So essentially the, the basket is basically set up on, say, a basketball net post. Uh, it's about as high as, you know, this desk and they're, uh, sleeved into the ground, so they can be removed whenever, whenever they need to be removed. Um, I've worked with, uh, Spencer, who was the one who brought this to my attention. And we have strategically planned this, so it doesn't, uh, interfere with any walking trails within the park and does not interfere with any of the cross-country track. So it's very strategically placed, um, and it's basically set into the environment, so it's a nice, um, coexisting activity, uh, and there shouldn't be really much substantial change to what we have going on there right now.
And, and I certainly would continue to support this. I think it's great and I really appreciate this happening and, uh, um, and just that there were some questions. There was some, people thought that was gonna take up sixty acres, which is absolutely insane, you know, and, um, and, uh, so we know that wasn't the case and everything, so. Social media. But thank you.
Appreciate it.
Agreed.
No, I've, I've played at Borderlands and it was fun.
Oh, I tell you, uh, uh, I do a lot of camping and it is going crazy. Everybody, that and pickleball is ev- it's all they're doing.
I think anything to get the people out in, in the park and explore the landscape, um, is beneficial. The more people that use the park, the better, um, the more eyes on the park. Uh, I, I think it's always good to have a lot of people in, in these type of areas.
Absolutely. Councilor LaVoy?
Thank you. Just a brief comment. I, I just wanted to thank you for the sacrifice. Obviously, I know that takes a lot, being in the line of work. I know it's taxing. Um, but, and I also wanted to just thank you for the clarity on the kinda lineup of positions. When you mentioned this one not being funded, I think like four hundred alarms went off in my head when we were talking about new positions but not funding existing. Um, but again, I just wanted to thank you for the clarity there and for putting it out to the public. And then also for the sacrifice and, uh, taking vacations sometimes, hopefully, right?
All right, now, let's talk about the
The zoo.
The elephant in the room. Let's talk about Capeport Park and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, traditionally, as you know, Capeport, the zoo has been uh, revolving fund, uh, account. And, um, a lot of the salaries from the zoo were on the park and forestry accounts, so that's why there was that large decrease. Those salaries were moved into their own separate account, along with some salaries that were on the revolving account last year. And that's what you can see in the, uh, one-six-six-zero, uh, one thousand account here. And, um, this move was made in an effort to stabilize the revolving fund, uh, as we know the past four or five years, um, the zoo has, uh, come under some hard times. Um, and a lot of that is due to, you know, the, the burden of these salaries on the revolving fund, as well as everything that comes with them. The fringe benefits, the med tax. Um, so, uh, we believe that, you know, moving these onto a city-funded, uh, side of things will definitely help with, uh, the health and stability of the revolving fund. Yeah, I mean, I'll give John the opportunity to talk about the zoo and then I can kinda give the administration's perspective on what we did here, but.
Um, well, Derek pretty much said a lot of it. Um, we have looked at some of our positions and tried to re- reposition, so we did have an assistant director and a senior keeper. We repositioned that, so I have someone focused on guest services. Um, those numbers have improved in our gift shop and, and whatnot. We're trying to figure out still our concessionary stuff. When is the right time to open to make sure that every time it's open, we're making a profit out of that. Um, the curator position is, is focused on the animal collection and making sure that all the animals are, are, all the exhibits are full. Nick was actually there. Um, when we were bringing in our yaks and whatnot. Um, we're, we're working on trying to develop new events, so we did a Doc Doolittle Day event. We did um, a kid stampede event, um, focusing on kind of our slightly startups, but not our busy season. Um, to try to, uh, spread our revenue throughout that. The other part with our collection plan is also to find animals that can be out year round. So we don't necessarily have a seasonality with most of our exhibits. Um, those are the things that we're looking at to try to draw more people in consistently throughout the year. As well as trying to figure out staffing needs. Our budget was relatively told to stay flat. So we've looked at different ways of, of how we order things. So in the case of bamboo for our, for our red panda, if we buy smaller boxes and get it delivered every other week, the shipping actually is saving money. Um, bamboo is what bamboo is, but we're figuring out different ways of saving that, looking at different suppliers that can give us um, discounts on that as well. Um, but inherently, we are heavily weather-based on our attendance and if anybody knows the weather this year, it has not been very favorable for us. So when it comes right down to it, is really looking at the biggest burden, um, to just operate the zoo to care for the animals has always been the staff. And, um, having looked at the numbers and talked it over with Derek and Mason, we're looking really right around two thousand and fourteen, when they started adding positions to that revolving fund, is when it got to be more challenging. So this, this has been a prevalent issue with staffing. I do think we're staffed appropriately right now, maybe a few, uh, more seasonalities. So we can provide those guest amenities, um, services to, to those people coming in. But I think in the, the day operations, we are staffed to kind of right where we have to be to be the earliest that we can. So, um, the zoo is also working, um, with our friends to fund a strategic plan to make sure that we can also um, meet the community's needs and how to draw that in. I believe several of you, of you have been contacted by that group. Um, and that can kinda help us get, get together a plan that we need to move forward, not only to be sustainable, but to meet the community's needs. And those type of resources that maybe we aren't thinking about that someone is from outside the community can propose maybe different ways we can think things as well. That's been the big, the big jumps for this year, really.
And Mason, do you wanna talk from the administrative, administration side?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, our goal in the narrative was really to lay out where the zoo is, what the change approach was this year and sort of looking ahead. Um, you know, starting from kinda the point that, that John just brought up about the, the friends of the zoo, right? They're working on you know, this first piece, this sort of new financial management approach. Uh, some of that was actually almost inspired by one of the tasks that was requested of me from the Friends of Capeport Park Zoo. So they had this is full transparency mode, but they had asked for what is the last five years of sort of the general funds dollar-for-dollar commitment to the zoo. So, right, we've been easily able to draw out, okay, here's how much the zoo revolving fund expenses were. But what about the general fund? And the fact that, you know, I think the total cost of the zoo, the lines have been pretty blurred, being that it's been sort of under the park and forestry budget. And one of the challenges is, uh, because we have, you know, we have salaries and, and other, um, costs that were in the park and forestry budget, and then you have all these fringe benefits, to actually go back and pull the actuals, not just the budgeted upfront, but the actuals is, it's a, I haven't even gotten to it. It's gonna take me a couple of days to actually go through that information and pull down you know, all the detailed check histories on every employee that was working at the time, any staff change or, so actually pulling down the, to down to the penny amount is extremely complicated, right? So that's a problem just from the outset, is that we can't, you know, it, it's, it's obviously possible, but like just the the fact that I can't quickly say, here's exactly the amount of dollars that were spent in FY twenty-two on the zoo between the revolving fund and the general fund. Should be able to do that at all times, right? And in other departments, I can do that. Um, so that, so I think off the bat, the, the approach was, okay, for full financial transparency, let's pull this out. Let's make this easier to inform these conversations going forward. So that's why, you know, you see in the paper, like the park and forestry got a fifty percent budget cut. It's not, it's, doesn't tell the whole story, right? And then you try to lay out the staffing changes, right? So in, in FY twenty-four, there was fifteen full-time equivalent positions. Five and a half of those were on the revolving fund and nine and a half were on the general fund. Fast forward to the FY twenty-six proposed budget, you have thirteen full-time funded staff, um, with ten of those on the zoo general fund. Um, and also the actual salaries and positions that have been shifted over you, are some of the, the higher, higher paying positions. So, um, in terms of the actual cost taken on in the general fund this year, it's probably for the first time in at least a decade, maybe ever, the general fund is, is actually sharing a larger proportion of the cost of the zoo between salaries, benefits, et cetera, than the revolving fund. So that's a pretty significant shift. If you look at, you know, past budget narratives, you'll see that so, sort of the going number was in. so, sort of the going number was, in the revolving fund was about sixty-five percent, their general fund about thirty-five percent. And that was sort of kind of where we're looking at. We're now slightly over fifty percent on the general fund. Um, so that's obviously a, a, a big difference. Uh, a lot of that's just motivated by the revenues. So, you know, um, Derek and John spoke to it a little bit, but if you, if you look back in the revolve, at the revolving fund, you look between, if you look back, the last time the revolving fund's actually had a year where it's spent less than it brought in, was, uh, fiscal year twenty-seventeen. So, you know, we talk about the pandemic and, and some of the issues, but, you know, that exacerbated the issues, obviously. Uh, but some of these issues existed prior to that. So, you know, the average sort of what you might call loss since fiscal twenty-seventeen, if you exclude the cash infusion, was about a hundred and forty thousand a year. So we've been essentially bleeding down the cash on hand available for the zoo to operate and haven't, you know, adequately taken on those costs elsewhere. We've just been sort of, you know, to Bill's point, running, you know, the train's running full steam ahead and we, we didn't really mitigate that issue. We tried last year to sort of limit some of the expenses, um, and even that, I think, was a little too optimistic, right? So we, you know, we set the expenditure limit at one million, like seventy thousand, um, which gave us some preliminary revenue targets month to month. And, you know, based on those targets, I think through April, we were about, we're a little over, a little under two hundred thousand behind those revenue targets. So we've sort of failed to meet those revenue expectations, which means our, you know, our, um, we're operating at a deficit essentially in that, in the zoo revolving fund. Uh, the, that deficit's being made up by the cash that was on hand. But if you look at the cash on hand in the zoo revolving fund as of, you know, when the budget was sent down, it's essentially the amount of money that we infused into the zoo fund from ARPA. So I think it was fiscal twenty-three, four hundred and seventy thousand was basically infused to sort of extend the operations of the zoo and, and, and kind of mitigate, mitigate that revenue loss that happened during the pandemic, because that's about what that revenue loss was. Um, but we've now, you know, eaten those funds down, and that's the, the only amount remaining in the zoo revolving fund is essentially that cash infusion. So, you know, we went from having about six, seven months of operating cash at the beginning of this fiscal year to closer to three to four. And as everybody knows about the zoo, it's a pretty cyclical business. It's, you know, it's subject to weather, um, weather challenges. And, and, you know, in the winter, uh, they go about four to five months without really bringing in revenues, right? It's cold outside, people aren't going to the zoo, right? They're, they're driving in additional, they're using, trying to use specialized, special events and other revenue opportunities to bring people in the zoo, but it's, it's obviously just in a different environment, right? Folks aren't coming out in the, you know, snow in the middle of January. Um, so just for the zoo to make payroll, week to week, when you hit those winter months, you have to at least have over five months of cash available. I mean, if you're gonna, if you could potentially go five months without dollars coming through the door, you need to have cash built up to meet those expenses. So the approach, eh, the approach was to, was almost necessitated, just looking at the cash we had on hand, just to, to make sure that the zoo can operate for fiscal year twenty-six. And I think in this budget, it can. Uh, the eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar expenditure limit that was proposed is actually much more in line with the historical revenues, um, with even a little bit of a, sort of a reduction for, to try to be relatively safe. I mean, the average, um, the average revenue excluding that, that COVID year is about, is just over nine hundred thousand. So I think with that eight seventy-five, we put ourselves in a, in a place where that can be sustainable on the revolving sun, fun side. But the general fund side, right, we've had departments, one right here, where, you know, we took on additional salaries from the zoo to the general fund, and you can almost draw one, obviously, there's other financial challenges, health insurance, everything else, but you can kind of draw one-to-one connection of, to take on that salary, we had to go without somewhere else. Um, so there's, you know, it's both the cities making a larger investment on the general fund budget into the zoo, taking on more of the costs, but it's also, you know, I don't like to say zero-sum game, but the budget is a zero-sum operation, right? There's only so many revenues and your expenses have to meet those revenues. Can't have a, we have to have a balanced budget, so there's trade-offs. Um, so I think going forward, you know, FY twenty-six is really the last year that the, that the city can sort of operate in its current, this, the zoo can operate in its current state without making, you know, significant efforts to move forward, right? The city has to determine if we want to can, to fund more of the zoo operations on the general fund budget and what that looks like, or the city needs to explore, you know, i- is it, could the zoo be privatized, the operations of the zoo be privatized? Does the zoo need to, you know, close, like, everything has to be on the table. Um, you know, in terms of ensuring that we have a financially responsible model for the zoo going forward. There's clearly economic value to the zoo. I think, John, we've talked about seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent of our visitors, um, I ran the numbers last year, about ninety-four. When we were more financially viable, if you will, we were running about one-twenty. There was one year that was one-forty. And these were like in twenty-ten, twenty-twelve type of deals. Um, since COVID, it's been right around that ninety to mid-ninety and whatnot. So we've since November been taking surveys, just asking random people, I mean, a lot of random people, what their zip codes are for visiting. We find out that seventy-five percent of the people visiting are not from Attleboro zip code. Find out that fifty percent are from Attleboro and our neighboring zip codes, which means every one, the remaining fifty is coming from beyond our neighbors.
So there's definitely economic value to folks visiting the city, right? But the city also, so that's very obvious, right? But the, the city needs to determine, is the city, city government operating the zoo the most equipped to get the most out of that, right? Is there potentially, you know, private operation, or is there another way where we can, we can potentially get more value out of those individuals coming into the city and then driving them elsewhere? So, um, it's not just a, a matter of, you know, can the taxpayers support more funding of the zoo? It's, you know, we still have, we have a responsibility to look, are we the right people to run the zoo? I think that's a fair cut question to have, and are we getting the most out of it? The, what's in front of you is a little bit closer to the, like, Buttonwood model, the Buttonwood Zoo model, um, in New Bedford. They have a, a big portion of their zoo is funded on the general fund. And they have a much more involved friends, uh, where their friends actually manage all their guest services, and I think education programs and, and then they have, yeah, and all their events. So it's actually the friends that manage all that piece. But i- i- this is sort of a in-between where we, what we kind of try to do is take all of those general, all those salaries of those positions where even if the zoo wasn't open tomorrow, who would you need in, in the room to make sure that the animals are still taken care of? And, you know, that the zoo itself actually is still in operation until those animals could be moved out in two or three years, right? So the idea is, is like, these are the staff that no matter what, even if residents aren't, residents and guests aren't coming through the gates, you're gonna need these staff just to have the zoo exist. Um, and then all the other positions are either the part-time or the full-time positions in the revolving fund that, you know, could be, aren't, are, are more connected to alternative revenue sources, like the education programs, the guest programs, the gift shop. Um, even the vet, the vet position, it's not necessarily a requirement that the zoo has to have a full-time vet. Doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have a full-time vet for AZA accreditation. There's, you know, you can outsource those services. So there's a reason that that position's still in there, right? We have to look at those positions closely. Um, so again, the, the, the idea here is, is, you know, split, at least in this current environment, because we're financially, we have to do it, is try to split out those expenses. Um, and then going forward, we, we have to ever really move to basically come to terms with what we want to do, and, and I think FY twenty-seven has to be the reflection of, of what that looks like.
Excellent. And for anyone that didn't read the, the narrative, that, that very much says that, especially that this last paragraph here that says, "Moving forward", um, I encourage everyone to, to, to take, to take a look at that. And, and I know, Mason, that was the first thing you, you pointed out, you like, definitely read, read the narrative about Caper Park, and I read it. Everyone loves, everyone loves the, the zoo. Um, but there's, there's some hard decisions, uh, that, that we're gonna have to make moving forward. Uh, I saw Council of Lavoy first, uh, a- and then we'll go Counselor Angelo, Counselor Ford, and then President Zalicia. All right? Council of Lavoy.
Thank you, Chair Cobus. Um, I appreciate you mentioning a lot of visitors coming from outside of Attleboro. Um, I feel like it's important to put it on the record, and I'd asked you about it, and you've responded to it. Um, but can you touch on the loss that the zoo takes on from not having the ability to advertise on two billboards that would have been along the highway that all of these people from out of town are passing by? And I know I asked you, you told me it would, it was, it would be a big opportunity if it were to have happened, to have advertisements on two billboards. But I just want to ask you, and I know it'll hurt some feelings on the council, but I think it's important because every decision made here has plenty of consequences across the board for plenty of different people involved.
Right. Um, yeah, it was one of the things that, that I had talked about when I first started. The challenge is there are nine accredited with ZA or AZA institutions all within an hour's drive. So we do have competition, but we complement each other very well. We all work together. Um, just because I see your zoo doesn't mean I go see your aquarium. I mean, there can be a variety of that. It's our ability to advertise in our big markets to our neighbors. Um, that's always been our challenge in trying to find out where we can do that. Kalen has been a big help. You all probably saw on the news about the sloth, um, naming. We had people coming in this past weekend specifically because of that reason. So having her and her connections, because I'm still trying to figure out who's the right person at these places to get our story out. So she's been beneficial to get us, if you will, the gorilla advertising type of campaign. That's gonna be really where we do a lot of our stuff, social media. It's one of the things that the strategic plan people are addressing too. Where will we get our best bang for the buck to communicate? Because right now, um, we have the newspaper, we have the radio, but I don't necessarily know of the population here in town, how much they when, where they get their, their input for how they decide their day-to-day. Um, I'm a big TV junkie and social media junkie because I kind of have to do that for my job. But, um, that's been our problem with advertising. Putting a billboard up, I think we discussed that uh, a little bit, is very expensive, depend, once again, depending on location and the whole bit. So, um, ideally, the way I would probably want to look at doing that is if we could get like a, a business, um, similar to what Roger Williams has in collaborative advertising, and that would probably really help us out as well, but yeah.
Yeah, speaking more to the lost potential of free advertisement on
Yeah.
Tool. Well, yeah, two different ways, north and southbound, wasn't more the point, and I know we touched on it a little. Um, but, I mean, to me, that's a pretty large loss. When you have the potential for free advertisement, you don't get it.
Counselor Angelo.
Thank you. Um, great question, Counsel of Boy. I appreciate it. Um, when I was younger and my kids, and now it's my grandkids and stuff, I don't even know if you know this, or, or if you've been to, uh, there was a McDonald's there, which I thought was phenomenal. Um, obviously, I'm a, well, I'm more health-conscious now, but there's a lot of people that love McDonald's and I still might grab something there as well too, so hopefully that could be something that can be consistent in the future and looked at too as well.
We have, we have this, discussed the potential of farming that out, if you will. The challenge comes down to when McDonald's moved in, everything was on their footprint. And they had challenges making a buck there too. So we've tried to slim down to things that we can crank out really, really quick. We have something called a fryer, fryer leader, where you just basically dump your, your fries or your chicken in there, and then three months, three minutes later, it's ready to go. So we're trying just to keep something that we can turn quickly, like our hot dogs, chips, popcorn, ice cream, just something that snacks. We've also looked at vending machines, going with a vendor, um, vending machine contractor. And in that way, they're responsible for replacing it, filling it and doing that, but I think the revenues for us would have been minimal. So we're trying to, we're trying to figure out how we can maximize that. I, I briefly calculated, we have to generate a minimum of three hundred dollars a day to have it staffed and in a product to basically break, break even. And this is a time of the year, on the weekends, we can do that. Um, but during the weekdays, most of the school kids who are visiting are bringing their own lunches. So it's kind of one of those things, but as we build it up, then we can probably do more and more. Um, my contacts with other small zoos in the country say that, um, keeping it simple is about the best way, and they eke out a profit. So even if we were to do that, it's not gonna be a substantial revenue generator doing the concessions for us. But we can potentially make a profit on the days that we're open right now. We're seeing eight to sometimes a thousand dollars of revenue just in concessions. So, but those are very busy days where the weather is seven degrees sunny and no wind. So, um, but yeah, we, we've done a few really good days on the weekends, but there, but the weather being what it is, it just has not been consistent for us.
You couldn't add any, um, Martians from Roswell on your way up here to attract some people?
Tend not to eat hot dogs and unhealthy food, so, um, but yeah.
So part of the reason it makes sense for those expenses to be in budgeted in the, in the revolving fund is because those are additional services and op, like offerings that the zoo is providing, but if those aren't profitable, it doesn't necessarily make sense for the zoo to be, you know, doing concessions, right? Especially if patrons aren't staying long enough for that to really add value. The idea is behind those services is that they really should be bringing in extra revenue that then allows the zoo to, you know, build up its revolving fund and fund capital and fund new exhibits, et cetera. So those are the kinds of things where, you know, by shifting some of the more, you know, basic day-to-day expenses even more to the general fund, we have a better clear picture of, you know, where our revenue is being driven from, and are those profitable enterprises? Like, uh, not, it's a bad word, profitable efforts to where it actually is benefiting, benefiting.
And, and traditionally, the concessions stand in the gift shop have been the more profitable entities of the, um, of the zoo. I know, Jay, you were on the, um, the zoo task force, and we dove into all those numbers. And those, those two entities were the two that were consistently churning out some sort of profit. Whereas the education and a lot of the, um, you know, the, the memberships and whatnot, tho- that's where we were taking the biggest hit. We have made some improvements on the exterior of the park to do some sales to the playground, which I think would be a big revenue generator for this year and, um, you know, a little, a little bit helps.
Yeah, we've opened up our birthday party zone or whatever. Um, it's a space that holds about forty undercover for the pavilion. I think some of you guys saw that in your tour. That has been doing a good job for us reserving that right now. So that's one of the, one of the things, but most of those people are gonna buy the pizza that we were bringing, or they'll bring their own in for that party, so. But we have talked about, instead of just doing pizza and farming out pizza, can we provide the hot dog and chicken as part of that? But that's also, you have to cook it all and get it over there in a timely manner. So that's sometimes it's easier to bring a pizza than it is to bring all those assembled meals.
Perfect. Counselor Ford?
Um, I, I see that whether it's seventy-five percent or eighty-six percent is, uh, uh, of the people who use the zoo come from outside Attleboro. So we're subsidizing all those visitors, as I see it. And you said that's a great economic opportunity. I wonder whether people go anywhere after they've been to the zoo and whether any of that money actually spills over into downtown Attleboro. And I don't know that you have any evidence about that, any statistical analysis of it, but as a observer, I doubt it. So that's something I just, uh, that's the first thing I want to raise. Um, the second thing I want to raise is signs. Once you get off I- ninety-five, there's no sign to the zoo. And it needs a couple of signs. It doesn't need a billboard, it just needs a sign. Go right, go left, and then turn left in here. It's remarkable to me to have a zoo and not have a way, uh, for people who are not familiar with Attleboro to get to the zoo. So I would urge us, uh, to provide signs for the zoo.
To, to that, to that point, I don't know how much is true. I'm just remember when I was started, I asked that same question because I see signs a lot. Um, because there's technically a state highway one-twenty-three or whatever, there's a whole nother standard of how we implement signs on state roads or something like that. I could be wrong, but that's what was my understanding when I asked.
We know who the state representative is. However we do it, I think it's an urgent matter, and I would ask the administration to look into getting some signs so that
And we did have this discussed, actually, really recently, and if you drive by the zoo as of this week, you'll see some that even, they're obviously more localized to Caper Park, but even some of the wayfinding signs that, that Derek, um, worked on to get up there, which I, the first day I drove by, I went, those are great, brand new, right? I like, it, because some people, to your point, can be in the city and not know where the zoo is. So that's a starting point, I think. And then to your point, you know, is there something to do sort of in a broader, um, broader area to sort of produce more, better, better wayfinding?
I, I want, may I continue?
Please.
I, I wonder about, uh, the fee to enter the zoo. Is that something you've looked at increasing?
Yeah, so I think, um, so we're definitely gonna look at that in FY twenty-six. We had talked about that. We need to revisit the fees, uh, the memberships. They, they were raised not that long ago. That was a couple of years ago. And so, but those realistically, in this model, should be, whether or not they increase, they should be evaluated every single year. Um, doesn't necessarily mean that they will be increased, but they should be reviewed every year. So we are looking to, to endeavor through that over the next few months. So we are looking to, to endeavor through that over the next few months.
And when it, when it comes to the fees, it's finding that healthy balance. You want to charge for what it's worth, if you charge too much, you might be more of a detriment than charging too little. It's that dollar store effect, if I'm gonna buy something at the dollar store, I'm, I'm willing to go up to a certain rate. If not, I'm going somewhere else because I know I'm gonna get a better quality product for a little bit more. So it's finding that right threshold for, for the pricing.
So also to that point is, in the past ten-ish years as well, we've raised our prices twice, our revenue has stayed consistent, our attendance has dropped.
I think it raises a question in my mind about whether Attleboro should be running the zoo. Whether, uh, we contract out the, uh, the zoo, whether we, uh, merge with some other zoo. I, I don't know what the answer is, but from the numbers that I see and the trend that I see, it's not obvious to me. Um, that we should be continuing indefinitely, excuse me, to run the zoo. I'm not, I, I, I love animals and it's a wonderful thing, particularly for young children, not one that is replicated by immediate zoos. In our area, but I don't think, given all the, all the pressures, the economic pressures that we've been hearing about. That the zoo is the place for the citizens of Attleboro to be funding, uh, an, an, an activity. Which is not, can't even support itself, so that's my.
And I'll, I'll offer a little bit of perspective here, why the zoo is important. I'm not from Attleboro, I'm from Rhode Island, I live in Rhode Island. The only two times I've been to Attleboro before I've gotten this job is to go to La Salle and to go to the zoo. And that's a driver, um, there's really no reason to come to this city unless you're going to Route One to do some shopping. You gotta go to La Salle to look at the Christmas lights, or you're gonna come to the zoo. So that's the benefit that the zoo offers to the city, whether they're gonna stop at Dunkin' Donuts on the way out and buy a coffee. Or they're gonna stop at a convenience store to buy a bottle of water, that's revenue that's generated to the city that wouldn't be gained, uh, by not having the zoo.
And to your point, the survey that we're working with, our strategic plans will ask, while you were here visiting the zoo, did you spend money elsewhere? So you'd be able to answer that once we would collect that data.
I think that, that will be an important.
President Delicia and Counselor Soria.
Thanks, I got a couple of things, um, so first of all, I, I appreciate the conversation of the pro- um, privatization and the task force. We talked about that a year, year plus ago. Um, you know, raising fees is always a challenge because the way the fee, fee, the way the fee structure is set up now is where you're out of, uh, out of city, you're gonna be paying a little bit more. And the problem that that has is if seventy-five to ninety percent of our, um, visitors are from out of town, you know, they, like you said. You know, the, the fees have stayed the same, I mean, the revenue stayed the same, but the attendance dropped, you know, I think that's a pretty telling tale. Um, I was happy to hear you talk about, you know, the community of talking about the, um, other zoos in the area. So, you know, I grew up in Stone, so we had Stone Zoo, we have Franklin Park Zoo, um, Roger Williams. So are they facing the same sort of issues and challenges from a fiscal standpoint? As well, I'm assuming their attendance has to be relatively similar. Uh, but then, I guess the question there becomes regardless of the answers to those questions is, what are the lessons that can be learned from those organizations?
Um, the strategic, strategic, yeah, strategic plan group will also be interviewing and reaching out to very similar zoos in our neighborhood. But also across the country, um, zoos have seen an uptick in visitation since covid. Um, but they've also had an investment in the zoo, we have not had a major investment in our facilities. So I'm trying to basically change up our business plan, where we've talked about changing up the collection, changing up our interpretation, telling a different story. But right now, we, we just don't see any foreseeable advancement to make a new facility. Um, we're already tapped out as far as our infrastructure goes, so before we even built something new, we'd probably have to bring in a new sewer line. And definitely electrical line to be able to do any upgrades. So right now is getting a support, um, getting those uniqueness that makes us unique. Um, a lot of people prefer to come to ours because if you're a grandparent, you don't have to walk as far. Um, teachers, when they're coming to school groups, they can set themselves up and watch all the kids. We're having schools from Cranston and parts of Providence area that prefer to come to us because it is more approachable. We have more keeper chats and whatnot, obviously the larger zoos that can also contract out with, I think it's like SSA or other groups. That run their restaurants and their guest services attributes, um, but they have a big enough volume to justify someone trying to get that contract. Um, they also probably have a full marketing team to do the collaboration, but I can tell you, having talked to Director of Providence, they did the dinosaurs. It was a bang-up job, then they went to this mystical animal and they lost their shirt, so that's why dinosaurs are back. So we're all trying to make kind of perceptions of what people are wanting and trying to add that. But, uh, yeah, it's trying to add new things when they can and whatnot. But remind you, there's three point two million people all within a half hours' drive of Attleboro. There's people here if we give them something to come to, if that investment is made. And I don't look at this as just being a zoo issue, we have the art museum, we have the industrial museum, we have the parks. So yes, to your point, advertising just not the zoo, but the community that then makes it valuable for the people who want to live here and work somewhere else maybe. But at least they can enjoy the quality of life that they have, and that is more attractive to parents. Because since I've moved my family into Attleboro, we don't really leave Attleboro that much. And that's just because of the lifestyle that I have right now, just like Derek, always being at work. So it is good to have something close and available for families, and I know you've, you've brought yours as well.
President Delicia.
Yeah, so to that point, you know, when my, my son was younger, my wife and I, every year for probably fifteen years, we members, you know? Um, so the question I have, because I re- just a comment and a question, I'll keep it brief, is I remember when the zoo was making a profit. And it, it was, you know, it, there was definitely a positive impact. I think that continue to look at the pros and cons versus privatization, collaboration, whatever that might be. But my last question is, when are we up for accommodation next?
Accreditation would be twenty-seven.
Accreditation.
So one of the things they're looking at is financial support. When I first started here, I found out that we were supposed to respond to a letter with what we were doing and the whole bit. That was actually the first I heard of it because it wasn't brought up to me in the interview and it wasn't brought up to me by the previous assistant director. So I had to basically gather all that information really quick, talk with Mason, talk with the mayor and talked about you guys giving, uh, some of the American Recovery Act funds for that.
Yeah.
Um, but this would also be another deal too, where we are trying to support the zoo as much as possible. We do need to carry our load, we need to do more, we need to work more efficiently, I believe the staff is making those efforts. The hard part of it is, is we still have buildings that are not modern zoological designs that haven't been upgraded, our newest building is forty years old. So when we're talking about the animal control building, being twelve, I have a building that I can't heat and cool for the staff who have to work in it. So, and people can see that, and that's part of sometimes their decision, because we haven't invested and believe enough in our cultural entities. And once again, not about the zoo, it's about cultural entities and quality of life. And you guys have a, uh, very important and difficult challenge and I don't even phantom all the information. And I'm new to the area and whatnot, but, um, that's what brings people in here and that's what brings those people to have those memories with their kids. Is not, it's not just about the zoo, it is about the quality of life from our, from our schools to the extra things you do. Because it costs more and more to go somewhere else. And if you can have all that here, then you can also use it as an economic driver to sit there and say, you relocate your company here. It might be a hundred employees, but it's a hundred employees who can then live and be in the area with things to do without having to go to the big cities, except for fly out and go on vacation somewhere else.
So the other piece of that, that I was gonna ask with that question is, when were we up for accreditation next? And then what happens if we don't make that mark?
There's, there's a couple of options is so, um, we would probably assemble all of our stuff in twenty twenty-six.
Hmm.
Um, to then submit, I don't know if it's a spring or fall, but roughly around that time. Um, we would submit it about six months before, um, a group would come in, maybe three to four months before they came in. They'll have that time to read everything, then they do a site inspection, and then normally it's gonna be in the spring or the fall that we have to go before the accreditation committee in that regards. Um, there was some deferred maintenance issues, but their biggest concern, to be quite honest, was the finances, like we're all talking about right now.
But what does it mean if it's not accredited?
We could potentially lose animals.
Okay.
Um, because, um, if they're in part of a breeding program, they, they, we don't necessarily own all the animals. Or a majority of the animals because we're getting them from other institutions and they want to make sure that they're in institutions that are being taken care of and whatnot. That they have the funds to feed and care for and vet the animals as well. It doesn't happen right away, but it does make it difficult to be replacing the animals more than anything.
Thank you, I just want to make sure that that point was driven home.
Got it, uh, and let's go, last question.
Okay, one thought, which was really raised by, uh, you, I think President Delicia, which is perhaps what we need to do. Is have a, a one-day ticket for Attleboro that allows people to go to the zoo, to the industrial museum, to the art museum. All for one price and that would bring people into the city and downtown. And I'm, I'm happy if people are stopping at Dunkin' Donuts, but I really want them to do more than that. And, uh, a one-day pass for the whole cultural area might be, uh, something innovative. And might bring in some extra money, might do us all some, some good, it's just a thought.
And I, I agree with that and I've tried to do that at other places that had a visitor center where people could go and buy that ticket. It's a little, I mean, not that they can't buy the same ticket at all these locations.
Sure.
But we would have to talk about that, but yeah, it, it is something I've discussed at other places.
Good, okay.
Counselor Lavoy, sorry if I skipped you.
No, no worries, I appreciate the leniency there, um, yeah, absolutely. So real quick, my comment would be, I, I don't think privatizing is a good idea and I hope to get on the committee group, whatever to help, I've asked to be on it. Hopefully I'm on it, I think I bring a lot to the table. Have you ever looked into like a ghost kitchen opportunity for the concessions? You know, someone that would lease the space at whatever rate, they would service the concession side, but then on the walk-up window side, DoorDash, Uber Eats. Those types of things would be able to be sold, you probably would, you wouldn't profit from that, you'd profit off the footprint. But, you know, me as Nick's Eats, I want to open on DoorDash, I don't want to rent out this astronomical space. But if I can do what I can do out of your facility, make my money on Uber Eats, DoorDash, pay the rent to you. And then also, you know, make whatever the fractional margin is on the concession side. But, you know, from my perspective, I get a better opportunity, I get a better rate, I make a little money here from the zoo side. If it's slow, we don't care, if it's busy, perfect, concessions make money, uh, that's probably something you could think about looking into.
We, we actually did before the season, but the process of doing an RFP, so it'd be great if some, we could just say, yeah, that person wants to do it, here's the rent and go for it. But ideally, it would probably have to go through the RFP process and given the timeline that we were trying to figure out how to get this thing open so we could start making something. It, I shouldn't say it fell to the wayside, we were just kind of like doing, hey, I know somebody who might be interested to stop by and said, eh, okay. So having that footprint of McDonald's can also be challenging because of the, whatever food that they want to sell, they may have to totally gut it. And it may or may not have the electrical capacity that they need. And, you know, I mean, right now, when I first started, I was told that they served hamburgers, but they weren't using it under the hood. We were, there were some health issues and, and whatnot, so the fryer later helped us reduce that, we're not doing hamburgers and whatnot. We're doing what we can do in that environment without having to overload it and overheat that space as well. So I think we, I think the model we have right now is about the best we can do with what's there, uh, which does not make it the most attractive for somebody else. But, you know, we've talked about food trucks or other means, but food trucks are not consistent in how we do that and when they do that. Their numbers have to be right for food trucks too.
Agreed, in my mindset, it's more year-round as opposed to, you know, May to August and, I'm, that's besides the point, I think there's plenty of, I think.
We're, we're, we've entertained it, it's just to expedite and get the thing going.
No, I agree.
It went on the back burner.
Alright, thank you, um, lots to think about. Um, I don't think we, does anybody have any other sort of general comments about the budget? Mason, do you have any, anything else?
Good exhaustive conversation about it, so thank you very much.
Alright.
Again, everything's on the table going forward, I think that's, it's difficult conversations, but hopefully find a good solution.
I think, I think the key for the zoo to be successful is where to find its niche, to separate itself from Buttonwood, Roger Williams. And set, set itself apart and make it a destination that people want, want to come to, whether we cater to the smaller children and make it a children's zoo. You know, we need to find our niche, that's the key when it's an overpopulated business and we are, we're so close to so many zoos. That we need to set ourselves apart.
And the strategic plan is gonna discuss that as well.
Perfect, alright, move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Yes, settle free.